...of December 17th, 2018 to order. If you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please let the record note that all council members are present this evening. We have minutes from December 10th. Without objection, they'll be approved. Seeing none, we'll move on to our schedule of committee meetings. Ms. Hands.
Good evening. All of our committees will meet this Wednesday, December 19th, right here in City Council chambers. We'll start out the day with our first committee of the whole meeting. It'll begin at 11:50 a.m. and go until 12:50 p.m. Then we'll have Parks and Conservation from 1:20 p.m. to 2:20 p.m. Administration and Finance from 2:25 p.m. to 2:30 p.m. Land Use and Planning from 2:35 p.m. to 2:55 p.m. And our second committee of the whole meeting from 3 o'clock p.m. to 4:30 p.m.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the committee's schedule? Seeing none, we will move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. This is your opportunity to comment on items not elsewhere on the agenda this evening.
Hello, my name is Shane Stany, Ward 1. I'm an organizer for the Missoula General Defense Committee and help with Food Not Bombs here in Louisiana. I'm very excited. I'd also like to ask you to do your thing if you can. I'm formerly homeless myself. I've spent my new year in the business while struggling with the COVID pandemic. Everyone standing up right now can install their fellow community members. Report to sleep on high school. I'm enjoying the cold. The calling of the city is drastically increasing support of the goal stated in its favor of plan and homeless assistance by the Union Council. Which means supporting all other state goals, but also including helping to remove barriers in the system, which clearly stated on page nine of the vision home, the former update 2018, that provided states by housing communities well. We ask to make good on the claim of removing barriers within the system that hinder actions that would help the homeless community. The 300 subordinates that want to use barriers, the 300 subordinates states that need homeless shelter has to give these 300 people new residential structure, they can make it essentially possible to move. The 400 of the 300 subordinates on homeless shelters commit subsequent clothing of the union gospel mission wet shelters. There's no reason to do a homeless self-study condition to escape them. The ordinance states that it's impossible for shelters to be centrally located in the central. The only two important is to shut down one's shelters that are used to be held by the right. I know the council and mayor has supported the Salvation Army's opening of a warming shelter, and I completely support that 100 percent. With all due respect, that's not good enough. It's part of downtown and homeless folks for the United to run by organization for state conversion there, which is a very uncomfortable spot for LGBTQ homeless folk, which there's no shortage of it. The same. We need to stand with our community. Whether anyone here doesn't personally consider the homeless folk to be a part of our community, personally it's not too big of a deal. It's a fact. We understand that the city does not create homelessness, and are also not best equipped to do so. This is a multifaceted, new system issue, and we're not simply need this, need shelters. We understand that. We need to write actually non-award letters. We need to go to one another after that and stop pushing each other aside. With our community as team, take care of one another is the best way to go. Homeless folk are dying from the story. This should be considered a humanitarian crisis, but I'm even thinking it's a suicide. We need a one person to be able to help.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name's Eric Wood, and this is my wife, Teri. We have been involved with the homeless community for a number of years here and in Ohio. And just seeing the way things happen is kind of disheartening. I understand that it is a hard thing to control and to provide for, but not allowing areas to have shelters or to have homes used by the homeless people, buildings that may be available, whatever it is, giving them an opportunity to get off the street. And I also understand that not everyone wants to take advantage of that. But we did have a number of people last year, as we were part of the Warming Shelter Service, that because there wasn't enough facility available, that did pass away. Last year, we had 13 people that died last year because of this problem. So, you know, whatever could be done in coming together to take care of the situation, I think would be much appreciated. And however that looks, anything from clean slate initiatives, putting them to work and providing transitional housing for them while they're working, to allowing places to be set up that allow them to beat the addictions that hold them down. So, whatever can be done, we're more than willing to step up in volunteer services.
Last year, I had several of you come, or several people from the city, come and speak to us about what was going on at the Warming Shelter. And there were several questions, and a couple of things they asked was, what can the city do to help? There's two things. There is, a detox center is definitely needed for these homeless people, so that they can become viable in the community. The other is a wet house, somewhere where they can go when they're intoxicated, so that they can get the rest that they need to maybe get up and start another day sober. There are so many things that can be done. Trying to do the 10-year plan to end homelessness, we just need to get a little more togetherness and fight for these people who do live on the streets.
They can't fight for themselves.
That can't fight for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Hey there. I'm gonna read from a paper because I messed things up and I might curse, so. Hi, my name is Gil Wigan, and I live in Ward 3. I, as well as Shane, I'm an organizer with the Missoula General Defense Committee and also help with Food Not Bombs here in Missoula. I also spent three years as the manager of Free Cycles here in Missoula, where the large portion of our clientele are people who are homeless or are only one single fine away from it. That could be something as insignificant as a sidewalk shoveling fine, for example. The lack of a low-barrier emergency warming shelter is both a moral and a financial problem for Missoula. Many homeless folk on the street during cold days are being processed multiple times a night into the hospital. They do this to get warm for an hour, then are kicked out on the streets again, because they have nowhere else to go. The EMTs and firemen realize how ridiculous this is, yet the problem persists. The hospital, the ambulance service, and the city are wasting an immense amount of money, and I want to make sure that people understand, I'm bringing up a financial topic here just because I realize that's also important in this debate. The hospital, the ambulance service, and the city are wasting an immense amount of money and resources on this. There's no way that any of these folks can pay their debts, so the ambulance company and hospital take the financial hit. In a document prepared by the city analyzing costs of Missoula homeless folk, they found that in 2019, it cost St. Pat's ER around $3 million to serve homeless folk, mostly for issues that would be nonexistent if they were housed. This also affected community hospital, which was at about a half million. Ambulance services were closer to 200,000, and as of 2012, it costed around $110 a night to be in jail. Inflation has risen, so that number is not actually up to date anymore. This does not even include the costs of the city from the fire department dispatches. A warming shelter is not only a safer and more human option, it is also a cheaper one. We are not here with the primary goal of saving the city money, I assure you that. We are here to save the lives of our fellow community members. Nevertheless, if financial costs are a barrier to affecting change, then we must also evaluate the monetary cost of doing nothing.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Michael Workman. I'm from Ward 1. I was born here in Missoula, Montana. I'm also an organizer at the Democratic Socialists of America, the Industrial Workers of the World, and I also work at Food Not Bombs with Shane and Gil. We feed homeless people every Sunday out at the courthouse. That's what Food Not Bombs is. Many of the people we serve at Food Not Bombs suffer from addiction and are not allowed in the POV. This time of year is extremely dangerous for them, because they have little to no access to warm spaces. Their need to use drugs and alcohol in order to cope is understandable, given the circumstances that they face. Having a father who suffers from addiction and has experienced periodic homelessness throughout my life and his, has made me acutely aware of how fragile our access to a decent standard of living really is. I've also seen firsthand how people that suffer from addiction, that have no support, rarely, if ever, maintain sobriety. Research has definitively backed this observation. Suffering from addiction is not a capital crime, and we cannot treat it as such. We, as a community, need to come together to guarantee that our fellow community members do not have to die out in the cold. We understand that the city did not create the problem of homelessness, and you are also not best equipped to fix it. This is a systemic issue that prioritizes profit over people and will not be fixed simply through shelters or housing. With that being said, this community has an immediate need for a shelter beyond the Salvation Army to save lives. We are calling upon the city of Missoula to add a public warming shelter to their plan to end homelessness. We want the city to utilize a centrally-located, city-owned structure that will become an emergency shelter for temperatures below 35 degrees, with no requirements on sobriety. This program would need to be functional as soon as possible, and has to become a permanent program. If you do not believe that this is in the realm of possibility, we want to see proof that the city has exhaustively considered all assets that could be used as a warming space. This, of course, will be a costly endeavor. Nevertheless, there are many avenues for funding. For example, the City Council could adopt a policy resolution to set guidelines and boundaries for the MRA to support this financially, since they have more discretionary funds than the City Council. And there will also be a large amount of money saved on the behalf of the police and fire departments, because they will no longer have to process homeless folks. We also understand that this would create a liability issue for the city. But I would like you to consider, if the city was liable for the people who died on the streets, will we even be having this conversation? While we support the efforts of the 10-year plan to end homelessness, we see that in the upcoming meeting of the whole this Wednesday, and in the housing policy update that is on the agenda, that there is no talk of emergency-supportive housing, let alone emergency-warming shelters. Saving the lives of folks suffering from addiction needs to be a bigger priority of City Council. We know this cannot happen immediately, but we expect the City Council to put forth a referral to address this problem. We are willing to work with you and hope you will work with us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on this topic? All right, thank you all very much for coming down.
I'm short, and that's not my name. My name is Elizabeth Marshall, and I know quite a few of you here. I work at the Housing Authority. I've been there 16 years. I know the many of the layers and complexities involved in this issue, and I would just like to put a personal face on this topic. I manage the Palace Apartments downtown and a couple of other buildings, and one of my tenants left about a year and a half ago, hoping that he would sober up, and it didn't work out. He was back on the streets. And last March, on one of our last cold nights, my tenant and friend Wade died outside my office. Every day that I go in and out of my office, for as long as I work there, I will walk through where Wade spent his last moments, and I want to put a personal face on this reality in our community. And thanks for what you're doing and will do.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Letitia Romero. I came here today to stand in solidarity with my fellow Missoulians, my community, my brothers and sisters. Given the emergency climate change status of our world, our planet, who we may refer to as our Mother Earth, that blesses us with water and life every day, I feel that it is utmost important that we start to look after one another, especially our most vulnerable populations. For we will always be as strong as our weakest link. And we will need to be strong as we move forward, as our planet's future looks more grim every day. Somewhere down the line, the game of politics let our people down, to the point where they don't feel that we have a voice or an impact on the decisions that are made every day by those holding government power. I, myself, am a cynic of politicians and the agenda I feel they have of their own that always seems to put profit and power above the health of our Mother Earth and of its people, of her people. Last week, I met City Council member Julie Merritt for the first time at the General Defense Committee Blanket Drive. It was my first interaction with a City Council member, and I was able to ask her some questions. One of my questions was, why is Missoula becoming so expensive to live in? Why are hard-working people who put in 40 to 60 hours a week, holding down two jobs, still struggling to make their rent and have a savings account? Her response was along the lines of that it is market-driven, that we are at the mercy of developers and their big-profit-seeking intentions. I ask, who gives them permits to build? Who are the bosses that run our city? The people of Missoula, or out-of-state, rich developers? The top 1 percent, whose only goal in life is to make the big bucks? I hope that in the coming weeks and into the next year, you will see more of us, more of my community, start to show up at City Council meetings, so that we may start to take back our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? All right, well, thank you very much. I really appreciate you all coming down. I would be eager, if anyone is interested, because there is some degree of organization here, to get together and have a conversation. We are doing some stuff. I'd like to talk to you about what we're doing. I'd like to talk to you about what we hope to do, and certainly having your voices at the table would be enormously helpful. I don't think there's a person up here, and likely not a person in the audience, who isn't interested and impatient in this arena for all sorts of reasons. And I appreciate your bringing a voice, and the issue to our attention, often we don't hear from you all. So, hearing from you is helpful. It's a great reminder that we have lots more work to do, and I'm eager to get on with that work as we can. Any other general public comment this evening? Yes, ma'am?
I was just gonna ask if Shane would be willing to offer his written comments for the record, since the microphone wasn't on and we didn't capture it that way.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any other general public comment this evening? Mr. Moore?
I would like to make another request, that the Missoula Redevelopment Agency be disbanded. For borders on criminality, I think that unelected people are spending millions and millions and more millions of dollars to a few developers and professionals in this city. I don't know the number yet on the shopping center. I know the road is going to be about $10 million. Forget about you're gonna have to finance it for 25 years, or whatever the list of bonds is. Over $3 million to the Stockman Bank, $50,000 to Starbucks, $50,000 to some little two-bit casino, and on and on and on. These people wouldn't have a problem at all if you disbanded the Missoula Redevelopment Agency and took that single amount of money and put it there. If anybody thinks it doesn't actually come from taxpayers, but it comes some kind of out of the air, from other sources, and it's not really coming from taxpayers, doesn't matter. I really feel sorry for you in a way. However, I know the mayor and the attorney, and I think all the members of the City Council do really understand it. They simply had rather give it to their pet projects or their friends, such as the owners of the Southgate Mall Shopping Center. Stockman Bank, Stockman Banks got over $300 million in surplus, got balance sheet of over $2 billion, and the taxpayers are paying them to help them build their bank. This is the second or third time I've seen this in the papers. This is an article, "Bank and Nonprofit Team Up For The Rivers." Stockman Bank, which has several locations in Missoula, I don't even know about children, has donated a total of $22,000 to the Montana Tramp Unlimited to help the Bitterroot, the Blackfoot, and the Clark Fork Rivers. I've yet to see anything from Stockman Bank to the taxpayers saying, "Oh, we appreciate you giving us $3 million to help us build our bank." Total criminality in how you're spending money by people who are appointed by the mayor, not elected, not even appointed by the, or selected by the group of City Council members. The mayor tends to four directors, and then they've got three or four or five people to help them run it. I keep hearing about how great Missoula is. One in 10 Montana folks are under substance abuse. One in 10. I think it was the YMCA. Last year serviced 353 families. One in eight struggled, I've forgotten where I read this in the Missoulian, or maybe it was the Food Bank Foundation. One in eight struggled with hunger, one in five of those eight was children.
And we're at three and a half minutes, and you've got a pretty big pile of paper there, Mr. Moore. All right.
I know you let the commissioner from county go over the last.
Yeah, she doesn't come every week.
Well, that's true.
Any other general public comment this evening? All right, with that, we will move on, ladies and gentlemen, to our consent agenda items. On that agenda, were approved unanimously in council standing committees, and we save a little time on Monday evenings by considering these items all at once. Ms. Hands, we'll read the list of consent agenda items aloud, so folks in the audience and those at home will know what we're considering, and we'll invite comment on these items before we vote. Ms. Hands.
There are six items on the consent agenda this evening. The first item is to approve claims in the amount of $2,159,610.73 for checks dated December 18th, 2018. Number two is to approve the Water Wheel Trails subdivision Phase 2 final plat. Number three is to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Kate Liamberger to the Tourism Business Improvement District Board for a term to commence on December 1, 2018, and expire on December 1, 2022. Number four is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the FY19 Relationship Violence Services Agreement with Missoula County in the amount of $166,033. Number five is to approve the Professional Services Agreement with Territorial Landworks Incorporated for engineering-related services on the Third Street Water Main Replacement Project for an amount not to exceed $26,522. And the last item, number six, is to set a public hearing on January 7th, 2019, to adopt a resolution revising City of Missoula Parks and Recreation Fee Schedules for Parks and Recreation Programs, Facilities, and Permits.
Thank you, Ms. Hands. Are there questions or comments from council members? Anyone in the audience care to comment on any items on the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, we will have a roll call vote.
On the consent agenda, Anderson. Anderson votes yes. Armstrong? Armstrong votes yes. Vissera? Vissera votes yes. Kares? Kares votes yes. Dabari? Dabari votes yes. Harp? Harp votes yes. Hess? Hess votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Merritt? Merritt votes yes. Ramos? Ramos votes yes. West? West votes yes. Von Loosberg? Von Loosberg votes yes. That is 12 yeses, zero nos.
And the consent agenda is approved. I'm unaware of any comments from city staff agencies, boards, commissions, or authorities this evening. We do have, however, a number of public hearings. State law and our own council rules set guidelines for inviting comment on a variety of issues in a formal way, and following a staff report on each of these items, council and I will ask for comment. Council typically votes on the same evening as a public hearing unless one council member elects to return that item to committee for further consideration. And I'm gonna shuffle the schedule a little bit to help with some staff time management this evening. We're gonna start with a public hearing on an FY19 budget amendment. Ms. Griffin. Actually, we'll do both of those, Lee. Items 2 and 3.
Hi, Lee Griffin, City Finance. I was gonna pull up the exhibits, but I don't know if we have a projector tonight.
We do. We just need to take the styrofoam container off of the front of the, because technology is on our side. Oh, dear. Thank you, Ms. Merritt.
Thank you.
You just got your audio/video patch? All right, Ms. Griffin.
Thank you very much. As you mentioned, tonight I bring two sets of budget amendments to City Council for this public hearing and for approval. Montana state law outlines a path for a municipality to amend the budget, and this requires a duly-notice public hearing with two notices in the newspaper at least six days apart and a public hearing. So, both of these amendments are what we commonly term as housekeeping items, and we use that term because most of these items have already come before City Council and been approved in various ways, but they've not gone through this public hearing process as required by state law to be attached to that final budget resolution. Certain other items need to go through this process to be approved, so that we can officially close our last fiscal year 2018 and finalize our audit, which we are on track to complete by December 31st this year. There are two exhibits, still very small font, but now we can see them up on the screen, and they're attached to the agenda item in Sire. And they outline what each of these budget amendments are, items are, and they present the item and a little bit of narrative, as well as the source of funding for each one, be it fund balance, grant revenues, or other. FY18's final budget needs to be amended to reflect year-end accounting entries and what we call a true-up for bank fees and debt interest, and to reflect proper accounting and charts of accounts that have occurred during the year, changes too, I should say. An example here is the creation of funds that were not created during the FY18 budget process. After the FY17 audit, which was still ongoing after we approved the FY18 budget, we decided to create additional capital projects. to create additional capital project funds for better tracking of those capital projects and related financings to pay for those projects. You may remember I brought that item back to city council relating to the capital lease proceeds accounting. For FY18, we also recognize some expenditures funded by grants and capital projects which had been previously approved in the CIP process, and there's about six pages. The FY19 amendments include fifteen items, these are numbered one through fifteen, which were approved with the FY19 budget, but not added to the final adopted resolution number, which is passed after that marathon public hearing, and this happened in prior years, and it's an issue that we've run into repeatedly. And we're hoping that as we fine-tune this new budget software, it'll be a very dynamic software that will update that resolution in tandem with approval in that first budget hearing. Additional amendments after fifteen, I'm sorry, there are no new, I mean, these are all, those numbers one through fifteen have the associated revenues attached with them. They are not new requests, per se. Additional amendments for FY19 are for capital projects, which were presented to city council and the administration during the budget, but at that time, they did not have their funding secured. Subsequently, funding's been secured either via approval and recommendation by the Impact Fee Advisory Committee, there are quite a few of those in there, or other sources, and we're now asking to have the projects formally added to the budget and allowed to proceed. Our wastewater utility wants to amend their budget to reflect a tighter operating budget, so they're actually reducing their operating budget, and then we are also adding some of those CIP items that didn't get captured at the end of the FY19 process. Lastly, for FY19, the Aquatics Fund has received approval from the Impact Fee Advisory Committee for funding their request out of impact fee revenues. And at the end of the FY19 budget amendment exhibit, we have some items that are budget transfers. These are simply transfers between accounts or between funds. They're not requesting new funding or changing funding. It's simply an accounting convention that's happening here, but we bring this to city councils as an informational item so that folks understand maybe why a budget in one fund changed from the prior approved budget, and it's usually just to conform to certain accounting requirements. The page after that shows the wastewater budget in detail so that folks can see where wastewater tightened their belt in their respective expenditure types. That's the end of my staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. With that, I will open the public hearing. Does anyone care to comment on these tweaks to our budget documents? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? Mr. Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Griffin, I was just wondering what the three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars for the art museum was.
Again, this is not a new item. This was part of the art museum funding that had already been anticipated and being funded, and we ended up bonding for both the art museum and the police station. This is adding that amount to the resolution, whereas it had been previously approved in the FY17 budget, and then on the FY18 CIP, but was not added to the FY18 resolution document.
Further questions? Seeing none, Ms. Harp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the city council adopts a resolution amending the annual appropriations for the City of Missoula, Montana, as set forth in the fiscal year 2018 Budget and Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, that increases the total city budgeted expenditures by six million, five hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars in order to recognize additional activities and expenses related to grants, debt service fees, FY18 CIP projects, and ongoing construction projects, core equipment replacement carried forward from fiscal year 2017.
And we'll take that, we'll take them one at a time, Ms. Harp.
Perfect.
So that motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
On the resolution for the FY18 budget, Vissera?
Yes.
Vissera votes yes. Kares?
Yes.
Kares votes yes. Dabari?
Yes.
Dabari votes yes. Harp?
Yes.
Harp votes yes. Hess?
Yes.
Hess votes yes. Jones?
Yes.
Jones votes yes. Merritt?
Yes.
Merritt votes yes. Ramos?
No.
Ramos votes no. West?
Yes.
West votes yes. Von Losberg?
Yes.
Von Losberg votes yes. Anderson?
Yes.
Anderson votes yes. And Armstrong?
Yes.
Armstrong votes yes. We have eleven yeses and one no.
And the resolution is approved. Ms. Harp?
In our second motion, I move that the city council adopt a resolution amending the annual appropriations for the City of Missoula, Montana, as set forth in the fiscal year 2019 Budget and Capital Improvement Program, that increases the total city budgeted expenditures by five million, twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars in order to recognize additional activities and expenses for fiscal year 2019, and incorporate expenditures and projects approved in the FY19 budget process, not added to the appropriated resolution, and recognize associated transfers between accounts. May I speak to that motion?
You may.
I just wanted to point out that our finance director, Lee Griffin, wanted everyone to know that in regards to our master sidewalk plan, that those dollars were not at all part of this particular budget, just in case anybody was wondering, and I will be supporting this motion.
Is there further discussion on the motion? Mr. Von Losberg?
Thanks, I'm supportive of the motion. I just thought it was worth pointing out that one of the things that changed in the wastewater budget is a hundred, almost a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar reduction in the electricity and natural gas budget line item, and a lot of people in the room concerned about climate change and mitigation, and one of the city projects out there has been a methane recapture project, converting that methane into electricity for use by the plant, and that is the bulk, if not all, of the reduction in the anticipated operating costs out at the utility, and I thought it was worth highlighting.
Mr. Dabari? Fair enough. Ditto. Further discussion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
On the FY19 budget resolution, Kares?
Yes.
Kares votes yes. Dabari?
Yes.
Dabari votes yes. Harp?
Yes.
Harp votes yes. Hess?
Yes.
Hess votes yes. Jones?
Yes.
Jones votes yes. Merritt?
Yes.
Merritt votes yes. Ramos?
No.
Ramos votes no. West?
Yes.
West votes yes. Von Losberg?
Yes.
Von Losberg votes yes. Anderson?
Yes.
Anderson votes yes. Armstrong?
Yes.
Armstrong votes yes. And Vissera?
Yes.
Vissera votes yes. We have eleven yeses and one no.
And the resolution is approved. We'll move on to item number five. This is amendments to the sidewalks, snow removal, and hazardous vegetation fees. Ms. Vanderheiden has our staff report this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Can everyone hear me? My name is Alicia Vanderheiden. I'm the business manager for Development Services. I'm here tonight to provide information on a request to amend two items within the Development Services engineering fee schedule. Development Services seeks to apply a standard, consistent administrative fee when invoicing both snow and ice removal violations and hazardous vegetation violations. Development Services also seeks to mirror the existing hazardous vegetation process of utilizing local contracted services when providing snow and ice removal, and to apply actual costs when invoicing. Currently, Development Services staff are taken away from their regular duties to shovel sidewalks and remove ice at noncompliant properties. This request is being made to standardize the fees and process utilized in both types of violations. The admin fees requested are based on reasonable expectations of staff time. It is a small increase for the snow and ice violation admin fee, and it is a significant decrease in the hazardous vegetation admin fee. I would like to emphasize that the City of Missoula uses a compliant-based system in managing both the hazardous vegetation and snow and ice issues. The approach used is distinctly different than a proactive enforcement that's used by the City of Bozeman, for example, in which the local police department finds noncompliant owners immediately following a drive-by assessment of city properties. Unlike Bozeman, the City of Missoula conducts an initial inspection of properties following the receipt of a valid complaint. A courtesy notice is left at properties found in violation. The courtesy notice explains the law and the consequence of not clearing the sidewalk. The courtesy notice also provides the contact information for Development Services, as well as local organizations, that may be able to provide assistance for residents in need. Only if a violation exists following a second inspection the next day does mitigation and invoicing occur. I would also like to emphasize that the vast majority of city residents comply with the law. Last year, Development Services received one hundred and fifty complaints. Only thirty-one of those complaints resulted in a violation, and only nine property owners were assessed at the end of the year. The majority of snow and ice violations occur on properties that are not inhabited by the owner. They are rental or commercial properties, and a number of properties have repeat violations year after year. In conclusion, the intent of this request to align fees and complaint-driven processes for both hazardous vegetation and snow and ice removal, and to engage local services in the mitigation of violations that are not managed by the property owner. Development Services submitted a request for proposals for snow and ice removal before and after the Public Works Committee meeting, and we've received proposals from three local entities for consideration, including Missoula Works. Don Veru and I are available if there's any questions, and we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Vanderheiden. With that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone care to comment on these amendments to our program?
Hello again. I apologize, my understanding of the numbers is a little bit limited on this topic since last week was finals week, and I've been preparing for the comment I gave earlier. I understand that there has been an adjustment to the originally proposed amendment to the sidewalk fees, and I was hoping to get a little bit of clarification on those numbers because that wasn't given in that brief analysis.
Okay, we can do that, but please go on with your remarks.
Oh, yeah. Effectively, what I'm trying to say is that raising the cost of this particular fine has a dramatic effect on working-class people, and the people that you talk about targeting with it are not usually held responsible. People like landlords, as it was originally talked about, irresponsible landlords. Irresponsible landlords are smart. They write things into their leases, giving the tenant the responsibility to take care of that, and they will pass that fee down to them. If those fees rise above forty dollars, many working-class people are going to find themselves -- this is where I needed to write something down so I didn't curse. What I'm saying is people cannot afford any raise to this unless, if you were going to amend this, do it on a wage-based scale. Use the city tax records, figure out how much people make, and apply the fee appropriately. A person who makes ten thousand dollars a year, even the forty-dollar fee can mean less nutritious food for their children. At the same time, someone who makes over a hundred thousand dollars a year, forty dollars is a joke, and we all know that. Make them pay the reasonable fee. Working-class people cannot afford any raise in this. And that's what I'm saying.
Thank you. Would you give us your name one more time for the record, please?
Gil Wigan.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on the amendments? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Questions from council? Ms. Kares?
Could you please address the question around what the fees will be and the proposed The administrative fees that were suggested for hazardous vegetation was a reduction from three hundred and sixty-two dollars, I need glasses, three hundred and sixty-one dollars, to one hundred and fifty dollars. And in keeping sidewalk snow and ice removal in alignment with that, we were suggesting an increase from forty-two dollars to one hundred and fifty dollars. This is for the administrative fee for the process of receiving the complaints, conducting the inspection, going back for a second inspection after leaving the courtesy notice, and then conducting the actual invoicing, contacting the vendor for the mitigation services that are required if the homeowner did not provide the mitigation services themselves after being noticed.
So only in the case of noncompliance after two checks?
That's correct.
Okay, is someone assessed?
Correct, and only if a complaint has been made by a local resident, either through telephone directly to our office, or through an online form that's available.
Thank you. Further questions? Ms. Armstrong?
Alicia, could you stand up? I think, and if you could further clarify, Development Services Director has, the fee will actually be fifty dollars for the first noncompliance, going up to a hundred and fifty. And if Mr. Veru might want to come up and explain this, when I worked with him the day before on these, the fees actually ranges from fifty to a hundred and fifty, and I don't know if he wants to come up and...
So the recommendation that was made at the Public Works Committee was for aligning both fees at one hundred and fifty dollars. There was some discussion that took place after the Public Works Committee, and it was suggested that actually a difference in language could be that it would say up to one hundred and fifty, and that could be made by council members this evening. And that would provide some leeway for first offenders, second offenders, at the discretion of the director.
Okay, further questions? Ms. Armstrong? Mr. Hess?
That'll be reflected in my motion. So I have another question, and this is just to clarify. When someone has the snow removal, they've already received two visits, and upon the first visit, they've received information about the violation and resources, contact information for how to get that resolved on their own. That's correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
We call it a courtesy notice. I do have a sample here, I believe. It's literally a half-a-page flyer that is left on the premises, just notifying that a complaint had been received. The City of Missoula wants to provide safe, easily-passable sidewalks for pedestrian wintertime travel. Local laws require those in charge or control of any building or lot of land abutting a city sidewalk to remove and clear away snow and ice. The entire length and width of the sidewalk in front of, or abutting the building or lot of land, must be cleared by nine AM following a snowfall. Please note, if the sidewalk is not cleared, the city may arrange to have the sidewalk cleared through an outside contractor. The property owner would then be billed an administrative fee of potentially up to one hundred and fifty dollars, plus the actual cost of snow removal. For more information, the Development Services number is provided. This particular copy also includes Missoula Works, may provide reasonable-priced snow removal services, and a number and a web address for how to contact them. Since the Public Works Committee meeting, we did receive notice from Imagine Missoula that they were full, and they were not able to provide any additional services to folks that were maybe in need and would meet their eligibility requirements, but we do check with all different services available every year before the snow season.
Further questions? Ms. Kares?
I think my question is for Jordan. The motion is to amend the fee. As I understand it, you may be saying that's up to a hundred and fifty dollars. Where in, if at all, where we discuss the service charge?
The fee is listed in, the administrative fee is listed in Exhibit C. The actual cost is per the request for proposals that Ms. Vanderheiden mentioned, and so in this case, the low-cost vendor was Missoula Works at sixty dollars an hour, I believe.
Follow-up? Thank you, that was helpful. So that is administratively decided?
Yes, and I think the policy is to set the, as a policy body, we are setting the policy that we are using outside contractors rather than in-house labor and directing staff to conduct those RFPs from time to time.
Thank you.
Mr. Dabari? Mr. Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my question might have already been answered, and I apologize. So are these warnings, these courtesy notices, are they dropped off in a mailbox, or do people actually physically knock on the door? Because I know that there are some folks that are older, and they stay in the house for a week or something because they don't want to go outside, they're all cooped up.
The staff member actually knocks on the door. I mean, the first step during the first inspection is to find out whether the complaint is actually a valid complaint. We do receive some complaints that are deemed not possible or not in violation, and so when the staff member goes, if it is in violation, they do knock on the door, and that flyer is left in the door, on the door handle. We usually punch the half-page notice and put a rubber band with it, just so that it
Alicia, I know that you have said this many times, but just for the record, this is only complaint-driven, correct?
Correct.
The city does not go out searching for sidewalks that haven't been cleared before 9:00 a.m.?
Absolutely. We accept complaints on Monday through Thursday, and inspections will take place Tuesday through Friday. So once the complaint is entered into the system, there isn't a first inspection until the next day, and then there's even a third day for the second inspection. So we are trying to be a good neighbor also in providing ample time and notice for those residents to take action, find some assistance to help clear the sidewalk.
Thanks.
Further questions? Ms. Anderson?
To -- again, just to clarify on the record, so last year, with the record amount of snow, we had 150 complaints, 31 violation notices were given, and only nine properties were assessed an actual fee at the end of the day.
So to be clear, there were 150 complaints?
Yes.
That resulted in 31 violations. Some of those violations were paid. The ones that were not paid are what get assessed at the end of the year. There were nine unpaid invoices.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions? Ms. West?
I just have a quick question regarding Missoula Works, I guess. Since city staff has a minimum wage requirement, do we have any idea what those folks that will be clearing the sidewalks are actually going to be compensated per hour?
Mr. Varu is saying no?
We don't have an answer for that. We would need to find that information directly from Missoula Works. The proposal didn't request that information. We were given a first-half-an-hour fee and then additional hourly rates.
Further questions? Seeing none, Mr. Hess?
Thank you, Mayor Engen. I move adoption of a resolution amending the Development Services engineering fee schedule to adjust the administrative fee charged for hazardous vegetation removal and snow and ice removal violations, and to amend the fee charged for sidewalk snow and ice removal violations to the actual cost incurred. And I'd like that to also read that Exhibit C is amended to read "up to $150" in both the hazardous vegetation section and the sidewalk snow and ice removal section. And I'd like to speak to the motion.
Mr. Hess?
Thanks. I think that this is an item that has had a little bit of overly dramatic reaction, to be completely frank. This is about serial violators. This is about properties that -- this is not about working-class people who cannot cause their sidewalks to be shoveled. This is about people who don't care, and it's about making it so that people who maybe have limited mobility, maybe are elderly, maybe have children, maybe have some reason that makes it difficult for them to walk on a snow-covered, crusty sidewalk, to have the basic right to go outside and walk around the block, walk around the neighborhood. This is about being good neighbors, like every property outside of the 150 or so that caused these problems. I bristle at the notion that this is about being punitive. This is not. This is about causing sidewalks to be clear so that every other person in Missoula can use those sidewalks. It's about fairness. It's also about not pulling -- our current practice is to pull city staff out of their other important work and have them go out and shovel the sidewalks, which is not a very fair proposition for those city employees. It's not a very fair proposition for the taxpayers who are paying for those city employees, and it's not a good practice. This allows us to bring in an outside contractor and charge the actual cost billed by that contractor, which after some work on that is a very reasonable rate. The $150 -- up to $150 assessment allows the city, again, to recoup the actual costs associated with traveling to the site multiple times, documenting the violation with photos, putting these -- invoicing the properties, getting the invoices onto the tax assessments if needed. It's a lot of work. And so it's really about the serial violators. It's about having a tool so that people will follow the rules. And 99% of properties do follow the rules, and that's great. And that's what we want, is for that other small percentage to fall in line and follow those rules as well. So again, I feel like this has been -- this has been blown out of proportion to some degree. Just for historical perspective, the Missoula Current -- historian Jim Harmon had a great piece last week or a couple weeks ago when this first came up, entitled "Missoula Has Argued About Sidewalk Shoveling Since 1896." And in 1896, there was an article in the Missoulian or whatever the paper was at the time, that one city councilman said that the people are just too damn lazy to clean their sidewalks. And so in some form or another, since 1896, there has been some mechanism to deal with this. And this is not a new -- this is not a new process. We're just shifting it from city staff to private contractors. So I'm supportive.
Further discussion? Ms. Kears?
I'll be voting in support. I am curious, and this is probably mostly for my fellow councilors, I am curious to see what will happen now that this is housed in compliance rather than the two folks who worked in engineering and were taking time away from their jobs to go shovel. I am not a very good predictor, but I'm going to predict something anyways. I predict that we will have more complaints because the people who work in compliance, this is their job, and they are more familiar with that type of work. And I just wonder what this conversation might look like next year. And so those are the things that I'm hoping that you'll be thinking about as we move through the winter season. But I think, like Jordan said, that this is a good thing, and I'll be voting in support. Thank you.
Ms. Jones?
I'll be voting in support of this. I'm hoping that there's a bit of a culture shift here because I have a lot of people in my ward who shovel their sidewalks or make sure they get someone to shovel the sidewalks or arrange something with a neighbor. And then there's always a few who don't shovel at all all winter. And so I'm hoping there's been a lot of attention paid to this this year, and so far, frankly, we've had a light winter. So when the snow hits, I hope there's a change in attitude and people step up a little bit more. There are, for the student renters in a lot of Ward 3, there is something called the Ambassador Program through the University of Montana. They can check out a snow shovel for the year. So need to step up and handle that and get it done. I have a lot of seniors in all of Ward 3. There are people, as Jordan said, with mobility issues. And shoveled sidewalks that are clear make it a lot easier for everybody, so there isn't a broken hip or a broken ankle. Getting the sidewalks shoveled gets people out of the streets, walking in the streets where it's very dangerous. So it's really a safety issue, and it's a neighborly issue, and we just need to do the right thing. And I think, as we've discussed a lot tonight, people who work with the city, contact the city, try and figure out a fix. It's going to be fixable, but it's the people who just don't respond, don't shovel a sidewalk, then we need to have a situation to address it. And that's what this is for, so I'm very much in favor of it. And I think the numbers are reasonable at this point and very workable.
Further discussion? Mr. Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank Councilwoman Armstrong for her work on this and trying to get these things lowered. I'm sure it's no surprise to any of you up here that I voted against the fine assessments during the budget meeting in August, and I don't think you're surprised I'm going to be voting against this tonight. I understand where you guys are coming from, believe me. I understand the desire for conformity and for everything to look nice and to be pretty and to protect folks, but to me, I hope that you guys can understand where I'm coming from when I say this. So to me, it's too compliant, it's far too controlling, it's too much government force of conformity for property owners, and especially because the fact that these sidewalks are not even owned by the citizens. They're city-owned sidewalks right-of-way. Even if they were owned by the citizens, I'd be even more upset that we're trying to enforce our will upon private property owners. Forcing people to, quote, "follow rules" using government force is something that truly, really, really bothers me, and I think everybody up here can understand where I'm coming from in that sense, given my ideology. Compliance in general, as Ms. Kears so eloquently stated, is an industry of their own. Their job, more or less, is going to be to find fines, to justify their time, and to justify their role. And I agree with everything everybody said about being a good neighbor, and I think all that can be done without the force of government. I think that if people talk to their neighbors more, I think back in the day, we had people that had front porches, not back porches. And I think that if people can form those more neighborly relationships and speak to folks, even people that are going to be out of town for three or four months, just say, "Hey, I'll scratch my back, you scratch mine. Maybe I'll shovel your sidewalks. Maybe I'll mow my lawn once or twice during the summer." I don't think that this is something in our society, in a free society, that we need to impose a financial penalty on for somebody. I've always been against fines and fees. I think that it's a big door. It is a door for the cycle of poverty, I think, that fines in general, folks that can't afford these fines, and even if it's not our intention, even if nobody here wants to accidentally do this, it could still happen by the way the law is written, and I think that that is a fairly big concern. And I think that another thing that I wanted to bring up is, believe me, I'm not a fan of arguing for increased budget expenditures, but I think that since the city does own these sidewalks, I think that it could fall on us as a role of government to help this infrastructure that the majority of the cities use by helping some folks out that maybe forget to shovel their sidewalks. And I think that if we cut back on other projects and under other expenditures that don't fall under those roles of government, I think that we could help folks out and afford the money to -- again, it was like $690-some dollars last year, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. And I understand that this is how cities across the United States have done it for years, and I understand that this long precedes any of us on the council. But as you stated, Mr. Mayor, just because it's always been done some way doesn't mean it always has to be done some way. And I understand that today it's not going to change, but I hope that down the road we look at this, and we look at this during the budgeting process, and see where we can come up with some money by cutting back on other expenditures. And again, I'm not going to be voting for this, and another thing that I wanted to bring up is that things happen, and as many members of this council have acknowledged, there are some streets in the city of Missoula that don't get plowed for seven days, if ever, because of prioritization and various other things. So I think that it's somewhat hypocritical of us to require by law folks have their sidewalk shoveled by 9:00 a.m., or if they don't have -- if they don't, then after a couple violations, they'll be fined. I think that a lot of folks, that rubs them the wrong way, and I think that some people can understand that, how it seems a little bit hypocritical when we can't get all the streets plowed that they pay their taxpayer dollars for, for seven days or even at all for some of these side streets. So just wanted to state that respectfully, and I will not be supporting the motion.
Mr. Debary? No applause, please. Mr. Debary?
First, I'd like to ask Mr. Ramos where the comma goes. Just a joke. So I will be supporting the motion, and as I think many people understand, this is really an issue of equity. The vast majority of the people in the community do what is the right thing to do without any compilation by anybody. And I think basically what this affords folks to be able to do is make a choice. As Mr. Ramos is clearly a fan of liberty, this is a choice for folks. If they don't want to shovel their sidewalk, that's fine. We'll take care of it for them, and we'll charge them a fee for it, and we'll be engaging the private sector in that activity. So I think ultimately it is an issue of equity so that everyone has a chance to use their sidewalk, which is in the public right-of-way and is free and fair for everybody to access. And I think it's the right thing to do.
Ms. Armstrong?
So I first want to thank Development Services for working with a few of us over a course of days to reduce these fees, and they -- we asked them point-blank to do less with more. We asked them to lower the fee significantly and to do the same amount of work, and to do it without complaining, and they agreed to do that. On the other hand, they got an extremely high bid from a contractor the first time around, and we asked them, "Is this necessary? Can we go to a nonprofit? Can we employ a nonprofit to do this work when it comes up as an infraction?" And they said, "Yes, let us take a look at it. We'll resubmit the bid. We will ask for more bids. We'll ask for lower bids. We'll ask for half-hour increments. We'll ask for hour increments, and we'll see what we get back." And so not only are we going to employ a nonprofit sector, we are supporting our houseless population through Missoula Works with this, and we're asking Development Services to do the exact same work for less money and less budget. And I really appreciate them working with us because they didn't have to take the extra two weeks to make this happen. So I really appreciate it, and I'll be supporting it.
Ms. West?
So I just want to point out that there's two fees on the table here, the hazardous vegetation fee and the sidewalk shoveling fee. And I think it's a great benefit to have that hazardous vegetation fee pretty much halved. I'm not sure how many violators there are of that, but it's just something to remember. I also want to point out that this is not about having a neat street, but rather having a safe street and a place for people to walk, especially on those low-priority-plowed roads that folks have a place to walk. I'm in a situation that's the exact opposite. I don't have a sidewalk on my street. I would love to be able to shovel a sidewalk, and instead, I walk in the middle of the street to the bus stop with my kids every day in the winter because it's the only passable place, and that's not safe or neat. So I'm willing to support this. I think it's come a long way from where it was a few weeks ago, and we'll, I'm sure, recap it by next year and see how effective it was and how many violators we had, and also, you know, how well it worked for Missoula Works. I think it's an exciting partnership, and hopefully we'll see positive results from this.
Ms. Harp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I wanted to spend just a moment here explaining what we mean by the words "public right-of-way." This does not mean that it is city-owned infrastructure. Oftentimes, people think that that means that the administrative branch of our government owns our sidewalks and our streets, and that's the farthest thing from the truth. When we say it belongs to the public, it means every one of us in this room has the ability to walk on that sidewalk or in the streets, use those streets. It's one of the reasons why, when it comes down to our homeless community, a lot of times, we find panhandlers sitting outside storefronts. We can't kick them out because they have the right, just like every one of us, to be on those sidewalks. And so I think it's irresponsible to say that we don't -- I think it's irresponsible to just pawn it off that, you know, it's the city's problem. We all, as public, have the ability to enjoy the infrastructure, and we also have the responsibility to keep it to its upkeep. And so sometimes we forget that rights do, in fact, come with responsibilities. And I think what this resolution speaks to is that we all have an inherent upon ourselves as humans to look out for one another, and whether it's shoveling, walking, or trying to coordinate it, you know, whatever works, we want it to happen. I think Dr. Debary pointed out the word "social equity," and I want to just hammer on that for a second. Periodically, I see an 85-year-old man in his walker trying to traverse Bancroft. And it's never on those days right after it snows. He usually waits until the bluebird skies come out, and by then, if it hasn't been shoveled by then, it's ice. And this man walks in the middle of the street. And I just fear at some point, we won't have him anymore in our community because someone didn't see him. So I'm going to be in full support of this. And I think to Ms. Armstrong's point earlier, too, we can always revisit this come next year. That's the beauty of what we do. We get to implement policy, and then we get to see how it works, and if it needs tweaking, we get to do it all over again. So keep that in mind.
Ms. Ramos?
I support this, and I call the question.
Mr. Von Losberg has asked that we end debate? That is non-debatable. Anyone in the audience care to comment on the motion to end debate? Seeing none, who will have a -- how about a voice vote? Those in favor of ending debate and considering the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And the motion carries. Debate is over, and the question before the body requires a roll-call vote. Debate is over, and the question before the body requires a roll-call vote.
On the motion to adopt the resolution, DeBary? DeBary votes yes. Harp?
Yes.
Harp votes yes.
Yes.
Hess votes yes.
Jones?
Jones votes yes.
Merritt?
Merritt votes yes.
Ramos?
No.
Ramos votes no.
West?
West votes yes.
Von Laasberg?
Von Laasberg votes yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Anderson votes yes.
Armstrong?
Armstrong votes yes.
Vissera?
Vissera votes yes.
Kares?
Kares votes yes.
We have 11 yeses and one no.
And the motion is approved. We will now move to public hearing item number one. This is a conditional use request on Hillview Crossing for a townhome exemption development. And our staff report this evening comes from Ms. McNamara.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Anita McNamara with Development Services. And this is a request from Hillview Crossing LLC, represented by Territorial Land Works, for conditional use approval of the Hillview Crossing Townhome Exemption Development. The property is located on the west side of Hillview Way and south of the Wapakia neighborhood. The property is outlined in red on this slide. The applicable regional plan is the 2035 Our Missoula City Growth Policy, which was adopted in November 2015. The plan recommends a land use designation of residential medium, which is 3 to 11 dwelling units per acre for the subject property. And it's also outlined in red on this slide. And the subject property shown in the pale gray and outlined in red again is 25.63 acres in a zoned RT-10 residential. 68 dwelling units are clustered for an overall density of just under three dwelling units per acre. Per Title 20, TED density is determined by dividing the net site area by the subject zoning district minimum parcel area per unit standard. The subject property contains areas of 25% or greater slope, which are excluded from the net site area, resulting in 22.76 acres of net site area. And the zoning on the property, as mentioned, is RT-10, which does allow for both single-dwelling and duplex residential building types at a density of approximately four units per acre. Surrounding properties are zoned R8, RT-10, PUD Homesteads, R40, PUD Homesteads, R40, and RM1-35. The RT-10 zoning district has the same setback standards and maximum height as the adjacent R8, R40, and RM1-35 districts. The RT-10 zoning district, excuse me, I just said that. Pardon me, moving on. As requested at LUP and also provided in the staff memo that was provided on Sire, this slide shows the floodplain map for the area. The subject property is located in Zone X and shaded Zone X, both of which are non-regulatory zones. The blue circle in Wapakia Park, which is maybe kind of hard to, let's see if I can use this. The blue circle right there, that is Wapakia Park, and that is the 1% annual chance or 100-year floodplain. And this slide shows photos of the subject site as seen from Hillview Way, from the approximate area where the access point for the proposed development is looking north and west through So before we go into the details of the proposed project and staff recommendations, I would like to remind everyone of what a townhome exemption is. Provisions for townhome exemptions come from state law and require compliance with zoning. Our standards are found in Title 20, the city zoning ordinance, and include compliance criteria for items such as density, setbacks, infrastructure, block length, and parks and trails. Townhome exemptions are not subdivisions and are in fact exemptions from subdivision. Therefore, the typical subdivision criteria do not apply. The criteria that applies here are the sections of the Townhome Exemption Development Standards, which are found in 20.40180 and 20.85070 for conditional use. As requested at LUP and addressed in the memo provided, townhome presentation that was given by Denise Alexander in 2015 has been uploaded to Sire for this conditional So now I'd like to go over the details for this conditional use request. On the slide here is the proposed site development plan. The applicant is proposing 68 dwelling units, parkland, two trail easements, and an access road with two connecting cul-de-sacs for, on 25.63 acres. Conditional use review is required for townhome developments of 10 or more units in the RT-10 zoning district. So the following summarizes the staff recommended conditions of approval, of which there are 23. Condition number one requires that plans submitted for the townhome declaration and building permits must substantially conform with those approved as part of this conditional use review. Conditions two and three require revisions to the preliminary stormwater plan to address Assistant City Engineers' comments. Final plan and development covenant shall specify long-term maintenance by the developer and homeowners association, and final stormwater plan for construction is to be reviewed and approved by city engineering prior to approval of the townhome declaration. Condition number four requires that plans be prepared and the installation of pedestrian crossings at the intersection with Hillview Way include crosswalk markings, a crossing beacon, and ADA ramps. Plan approval by city engineer prior to building permit approval of the first structure or through an improvements agreement and guarantee. And I just want to use the thing here again to show this is where that crossing is of Hillview Way. And then conditions five through eight pertain to trail easements. Number five requires a minimum 20-foot-wide, non-motorized trail easement and construction of trail within the easement to connect the Tonkin Trail. I'm going to go back to using this again. So this is the Tonkin Trail kind of runs along here. To connect the Tonkin Trail with Wapakia Park, and that trail connection is shown in red here. Number six requires providing a 20-foot-wide public access easement for the east-west trail shown on the site development plan here with a blue dash line across the northern portion of the site. Condition number seven requires providing a 20-foot-wide, non-motorized easement and constructing the relocated Tonkin Trail to Hillview Way, shown with the green line. That's here. Condition number eight requires a plan for protection of trail easements during construction. Condition number nine requires construction of a minimum 20-foot-wide paved pedestrian pathway and stairs connecting southern segment of Road A with the northern segment of Road A, which is shown here with the yellow line. The TED standards specify a maximum 480-foot block length. This condition serves to help mitigate the long block lengths of approximately 1,400 linear feet for Road A North and 1,320 feet for Road B, and provides a safer and more direct pedestrian experience in winter conditions. The applicant opposes condition number nine and has offered instead to construct a natural trail near the east side of the property, approximately in this location. These materials were uploaded to Sire this morning. While staff has had insufficient time to analyze this proposal, some immediate concerns would be that a natural trail may be impassable in winter, especially given the slopes on the site, and that the proposal does not serve to mitigate block length. Condition number 10 requires an easement for a future trail to connect to the east-west trail shown in the dash blue line. Condition number 11 requires the applicant to prepare plans and install road improvements for northern segment of Road A and Road B, resulting in a 20-foot-wide back-of-curb-to-back-of-curb section within a 52-foot-wide public access easement, including paving, curb and gutter, drainage facilities, ADA improvement, and five-foot-wide curbside sidewalk on each side of the road. While condition number 12 requires the applicant to prepare plans and install road improvements for southern segment of Road A, which is the access road here, resulting in a 21-foot back-of-curb-to-back-of-curb section within a 40-foot-wide public access easement, which includes paving, curb and gutter, drainage facilities, ADA improvements, and a five-foot-wide curbside sidewalk on one side. Condition number 13 states that covenants shall include that parking is prohibited on one side of the northern segment of Road A and on Road B and both sides of the southern segment of Road A. Conditions 14 and 15 require covenants to require notification to purchasers that road construction and maintenance of the drainage facilities and snow removal are the responsibility of the homeowners association and not the city, and that approval of the boulevard landscaping plan by Parks shall occur prior to approval of the townhome declaration. At the Land Use and Planning Committee last week, council asked staff for cost estimates on what the homeowners association annual maintenance and replacement costs would be for the parkland, private streets, and stormwater system. And the numbers we received were in 2018 figures. For park space, the estimate is $18,224 per year. When divided among the 68 homeowners, this number comes out just below $300 per year for each homeowner. For roads, that estimate is $14,062 per year. And again, divided among the 68 homeowners, this number comes out to be about $207 per year for each homeowner. For stormwater, the estimate ranges between $2,000 on the low end and $10,000 on the high end, which would equate to a range between approximately $30 and $150 per year for each homeowner. So altogether, the range would be between approximately $537 and $657 per year per homeowner, which does not include replacement costs, which for the stormwater facilities could be as high as $438,000. Condition number 16 requires the property to petition into the MUTD prior to the townhome declaration. Condition number 17 requires fire approve a hydrant plan prior to the townhome declaration. Conditions 18 through 20 pertain to weed management. Condition 21 requires common area landscaping and maintenance plan, including irrigation, street trees, and park areas, to be approved by the Parks and Development Services prior to townhome declaration approval. Condition number 22 requires statements in the covenants related to radon mitigation, energy efficiency, and the prohibition on wood stoves. And last but not least, condition number 23 provides that sections of the covenants cannot be amended without prior governing body approval. So per the townhome standards, 11% of the net site areas are required to be provided as parks or open space for the proposed development. At 22.76 net acres, 2.5 acres would be required. The developer has provided 2.68 acres exceeding this minimum. This is provided in the five graded park areas at the end of the roadways, shown in the green circles, plus the north-south trail and the east-west trail easements. To address a question that came up at LUP and which was also addressed in the staff memo you received, the five park areas are located on flat ground and comprise of approximately 0.89 of an acre. The north-south trail and the east-west trail easements are also each approximately 0.89 of an acre. And the common areas, which are not counted toward parkland, are approximately 11.66 So this slide shows the parking and pedestrian plan. Each unit has two spaces in the garage plus two spaces in the driveway for a total of four off-street parking spaces. An additional 47 parking spaces are provided on-street for a total of 319 parking spaces provided within the project. At LUP, council had asked staff to provide the densities of surrounding development. This slide shows a comparison of densities between this project and adjacent properties. Wapakia's average density is 3.09 units per acre. Briggs Court is approximately 4.85 units per acre. The Homesteads is 2.94 units per acre. Mountain View Estates is 0.38 per acre due to a sizable area of excessive slopes, which is in their common area. Mountain Shadows West is 2.37 units per acre. So at 2.99 units per acre for the subject site, the proposed density is similar to densities in the area. The next two slides are of renderings that were originally shown in the original application packet that was prepared. I should mention that the applicants have new drawings that were shown at Land Use and Planning last week, and I am sure they will show those to you tonight. But this is what was submitted and reviewed by staff and was also on the website for So this TED proposal was reviewed for compliance with the standards specific to townhome exemption developments as outlined in Title 20, Section 20.40180. So now I'm going to address the review criteria that apply to this project in particular. There are other criteria, such as wetlands or riparian areas, that are not applicable here, so we won't cover those. The criteria that do apply include density, which, the property is zoned RT-10, which does allow for approximately four units per acre. But however, as discussed, the site does include areas of 25% or greater slopes, which results in a net site area of 2.76 acres. And the applicant is proposing 68 dwelling units, which equates to 2.99 dwelling units per acre. So the 68 units on this site meet the standard for density. That's part of the TED review criteria. And setbacks, setbacks in Teds must meet the standards for the underlying zoning district and for RT-10 residential, and those are 20 feet for the front and rear yard, 7 and 1/2 feet or 1/3 the height, whichever is greater, for side interior yards, 10 feet for street-side yards. The setbacks will be reviewed and confirmed at the time of building permit for each structure. And for infrastructure, infrastructure must meet Title 12 standards. Engineering did review this project according to those regulations and found that it meets these standards for TED development in Section 12.22.1 for Section C. And conditions 11 through 15 will ensure the project meets these standards. And block lengths may not be longer than 480 feet without a pedestrian access break. Condition number nine requires an easement and construction of a pedestrian pathway stairs connecting southern Road A with Road B to northern Road A, which will help mitigate the block length. In parks and trails, you saw on the previous plan that the applicant proposes trail connections from and through the site. Staff recommended conditions five through eight require easements and construction of trails where stated and will provide needed connections between existing trails and parks and open space. The applicant proposes to meet the 11% open space requirement through provision of park areas and trail easements. With the staff recommended conditions of approval, this conditional use request will comply with the applicable standards of Title 20. And the criteria for conditional use review are here on the screen, so I'll just briefly go through those. One of which is the character. The residential nature of this project is similar in character to other developments that have occurred or are occurring around it. The site and building area are also generally comparable to other residential development in the area. The residential nature of the project has similar operating characteristics to other development in the area. And the staff recommended conditions of approval for the Hillview Way pedestrian crossing with beacon, pedestrian pathway stairs, trail connections, along with other related conditions for roadways, will help traffic move safely through and to and from the subject property. In response to questions from council at the Land Use and Planning Committee, staff provided information as requested in a staff-issued memo, which was posted on Sire. Some of these questions have been addressed already in this presentation. To address some of the remaining questions, I will briefly go through each one by one, if you would bear with me for a moment here. It's a kind of a packet. So one of the questions that was asked was regarding- So one of the questions that was asked was regarding private roads. And the question was, is it typical to have homeowners associations maintain private roads within their developments? And the answer is yes. It is typical in both subdivisions and TED developments for the city to require homeowners associations to maintain their private roads. Condition of approval Number 14 requires the applicant to include the following statement in the development covenants. The purchaser and/or owner of the lot or unit understands and agrees that private road construction, maintenance, drainage facilities, and snow removal for Road A and Road B are the obligation of the owner or property owners association, and that the city of Missoula and the O.A. is obligated to perform such maintenance or upkeep until the roads are brought up to city standards and accepted by the city of Missoula for maintenance. The second question was, how prevalent are private roads in the surrounding area that are maintained by homeowners associations? In our research, the Loop Road that is to the north in the Village at Elk Hills condominium, which is Village Way, and I'm not sure if any of these maps goes that far, but if you're familiar with Hillview, if you go up Hillview and kind of go around the bend a little bit further, and it's on your right-hand side, Village View Way is the name of that street, and that appears to be the only one that has privately maintained private road in this area. Another question that was asked was related to fire codes. What are the fire code design requirements for hammerhead turnarounds, and is there a diagram? City Fire did provide comment that the hammerhead turnarounds are acceptable, provided that the measurements are consistent with Appendix D, which is the fire code for fire apparatus access roads in the International Fire Code. And that was attached to this memo as Exhibit 1. City Fire also provided comment that the proposed private roads within the Hillview Crossing TED meet the minimum requirements of the fire code. City Fire comments are attached to the sire record. Further city fire comments commented that emergency traffic on private roads like this that have slope and are narrow is slow with optimal conditions. If the parking prohibitions are enforced and snow removal is provided, emergency vehicles meet the minimum requirements. City Fire also commented that if the hydrants are located on the no-parking side of the road, the private road width would need to be expanded to 34 feet in width for the portion of the road near the hydrant so that the fire apparatus does not block it traveling. So another question that was asked was with regard to who enforces no-parking prohibitions on private properties such as this, and who enforces snow removal on private roads. For the no-parking prohibition, each TED unit owner and the homeowners association will be the appropriate parties for enforcement of the no-parking prohibitions. Condition of approval Number 13 requires the applicant to include a statement in the development covenants that parking is prohibited on one side of the northern segment of Road A and Road B and both sides of the southern segment of Road A. Condition of approval Number 13 also requires road improvement plans and insulation include provisions for restricting parking to one side of the northern segment of Road A and Road B on both sides of the southern segment of Road A in the form of painting the curb yellow and installation of no-parking signage. For snow removal, again, each TED unit owner and the homeowners association are the appropriate parties responsible for that. And Condition Number 14 requires the applicant to include a statement in the development covenants that private road construction and maintenance, including snow removal, are responsible of the TED unit owners and the HOA. Conditions of approval also require language to be placed in the development covenants designating the TED unit owners and the homeowners association as the responsible parties for enforcing no-parking and maintenance tasks such as snow removal on private roads. Development covenants are provided to each purchaser at the time of sale. It's responsibility of the developer to ensure maintenance and enforcement occurs per the approved plans until all the units are sold and at the time the homeowners association is formed. At which time, the maintenance and enforcement transfer to the TED unit owners and the HOA. And staff is not aware of any regulation that would require that the city take over maintenance of private facilities. Another question that came up was regarding the Human Resource Council property to the west of this subject property, and if the city could require a road connection as part of the TED review. The subject property, Hillview Crossing, is owned by Hillview Crossing Missoula LLC and is adjacent to the four-acre landlocked parcel owned by District 11 Human Resource Council, the HRC property. Prior to the HRC, or, excuse me, Hillview Crossing acquiring the subject property, there was an approved subdivision called Southern Hills on the property that included a vehicular connection to the HRC property. The subdivision approval was never acted upon, and several phasing plan extensions, the subject property was sold, and the preliminary plat of the subdivision was allowed to expire. So Hillview Crossing has been unwilling to voluntarily provide a vehicular connection to the HRC property since their TED project was first proposed in 2015. In 2016, HRC filed a lawsuit against Hillview Crossing and the city of Missoula and the zoning officer, claiming that those parties had a legal obligation to accommodate a vehicular connection to the HRC property, as shown on the expired subdivision. In February 2018, after protracted legal proceedings, Judge John Larson dismissed with all prejudice all HRC claims against the defendants. The city staff would have no objection to a mutual agreement between Hillview Crossing and HRC to provide a vehicular connection, but that connection is not required by city Another question that was asked at Land Use and Planning was, could staff provide explanation of the applicant's statement that Condition of Approval Number 9 was late and not anticipated? And the answer is, staff advised the applicant in early scoping and pre-application meetings that the proposed roadways exceeded the maximum block length standard in Title 20, and suggested mitigation to meet the intent of the standard. At first, the applicant asked if they could request a variance to the standard within the conditional use review process, as you can request a variance with a subdivision. Staff responded that there are no criteria in TED standards or in the conditional use process that provides an option to vary from required standards. And staff suggested a pedestrian connection between Road A and Road B to help mitigate the block length. Next, the applicant submitted the first application for sufficiency review on June 22, 2018. Staff reviewed for sufficiency and provided comments to the applicant on July 5, 2018. One of the staff comments was that the block length exceeded the minimum, and staff suggested again that a pedestrian pathway or stairs connection between Road A and Road B for mitigation, and told the applicant that not including this item would likely result in a condition on the project. The applicant submitted for a second sufficiency review on July 20, 2018. In the cover letter, the applicant listed out and addressed each staff comment. To address the comment about the pathway and stairs between Road A and Road B, the applicant simply stated, "Thank you for your comment. A stair path has not been included on the exhibits with this submittal." The applicant was again reminded that not including the connection could result in a condition being placed on the conditional use. So another question that was asked last week was, could staff explain the pedestrian circulation in the development, the length of pathways to get to Hillview Way, and how kids would get to the school bus stop? So Road A South, here again, is approximately 1,400 lineal feet or over 1/4 mile. Road A North is approximately 1,320 lineal feet or 1/4 of a mile. Road B is approximately 1,020 feet or about 1/5 of a mile. Without the pedestrian stairs connection required in Condition of Approval Number 9, a pedestrian starting out from the eastern end of the northern segment of Road A has to walk approximately 1/2 mile to reach Hillview. Without the pathway stairs required in Condition Number 9, a pedestrian starting out from the eastern end of Road B has to walk approximately just under 1/2 of a mile to get to Hillview Way. An elementary school student walking to Russell School would need to walk from their home on either the northern segment of Road A or from Road B toward the intersection of the southern segment of Road A, which is here, and then to Hillview, up to approximately 1/2 mile. From the intersection of Road A and Hillview, it is another mile to Russell Elementary School. A middle school student walking to school could take the proposed north-south trail toward Wapakia and walk westward on the Meadow Hill Trail to school. However, as this is a natural trail, it would not be accessible in winter. The 2018 Mountain Line Strategic Plan does identify extending Route 6 to run on Hillview that will get students to Sentinel High School. So another question that was also asked at Land Use and Planning was, will the Hillview Crossing TED be required to contribute toward the Hillview Way SID? And Hillview Way from 39th Street to Alliance Way, as everyone probably recalls, was recently constructed at about a cost of about $3.8 million. The roadway improvement project was funded by special impact fees and a special improvement district, SID 549. The SID assesss existing properties benefiting from the roadway project as well as establishing assessments for future development. So Hillview Crossing properly directly benefits from the roadway improvement and is within the SID assessment area. The assessments for future development were set at approximately $1,700 for single-family homes and approximately $1,200 for duplex condo or apartment units. That's in $2015, increasing incrementally in each subsequent year, and these assessments are payable at the time of building permit issuance. Another question with regard to the design of Hillview Way is whether it was designed to handle the additional traffic. And Troy Monroe, the Assistant City Engineer, stated Hillview Way has the capacity to accommodate the Hillview Crossing TED and other future developments. Hillview Way was recently reconstructed and is designed as an urban collector. Hillview Way has a capacity greater than 10,000 vehicles per day, which is greater than the current use of 5,000 vehicles per day. And several questions were related to stormwater plans that were asked last week, so I'll just kind of briefly go through some of those. The first one was, could staff provide a summary of the preliminary stormwater plan? And again, Troy Monroe, our Assistant City Engineer, provided a summary of the preliminary stormwater plan for Hillview Crossing TED that includes relevant information, background, and relationship to the South Missoula Storm Drainage Project, which is in Exhibit 2 in your packet. And when will the final stormwater plan be submitted, and who will review and approve the plan, and will the final plan be approved before development starts? Condition of Approval Number 3 requires that final stormwater plan be reviewed and approved by city engineering prior to zoning compliance permit of the townhome exemption declaration. And again, Troy Monroe states that the final stormwater plan will be reviewed during the design stage. Excavation could start prior to approval of the stormwater plan, but would be required to obtain a stormwater pollution prevention plan or a SWIP permit that includes stormwater retention and detention requirements. And provide the total percentage of impervious surface area for this development. The proposed development will have approximately 6.9 acres of asphalt, concrete, which is sidewalks and driveways, and homes, which combine for 28% of impervious area. For the stormwater preliminary report, the total site area is 24.6 acres. How much of the common areas will be used for drainage basins? Until the applicant provides a final stormwater plan, that's unknown. The applicant's consultants stated that they were looking at increasing pipe sizes or supplying tanks to retain the required stormwater volume. However, they could decide to go with an open detention basin, which would take up some of the open space hillside area. And then another question is, clarify whether a geotechnical report is required for grading and drainage plans for private road and home locations. And the city engineer will require geotechnical reports for roads, infrastructure, and home locations, including excavation or embankment locations, in order to protect the general welfare of the prospective homeowners and the residents below the Hillview Crossing TED. City Engineering is also recommending a condition of approval be added to clarify the breadth and scope of the geotechnical report to ensure the report is provided as part of the design submittal and conforms to the requirements of city engineer, and includes the following. Includes an evaluation of existing conditions, recommendations for excavation and embankment, requirements for construction and oversight, requirements for submission as built, and testing results to the city engineer. And similar to other infrastructure submittals, the geotechnical report must be approved by city engineering before permits can be issued. And I'm almost done, just a few more. Could staff provide a copy of Denise Alexander's presentation to city council on November 4, 2015 regarding the differences between subdivisions and townhome exemption development exemptions from subdivision review provided in state law? And we did include Denise's presentation as Exhibit 4, and each slide is numbered, and her presentation notes are included with each numbered note corresponding to that same number of slide. Could staff provide information regarding the public notification process followed for the Hillview Crossing TED conditional use? And Title 20, Section 20.85070E does require notification of public hearings in the following three formats. One is newspaper notice. At least two separate notices are required for public hearings on conditional use requests, and it must be published in the newspaper with the first notice appearing at least 15 days before the scheduled hearing. A legal ad, which is in Exhibit 5 in the staff memo packet, appeared in the Missoulian on December 2 and December 9, 2018. It also requires a mail notice. A notice of the required public hearing for a conditional use must be mailed certified to the subject property owner and all property owners within 150 feet of the subject property at least 15 days before the scheduled hearing. Exhibit 5 also includes a map and a list of property owners to whom notification was sent on November 2, 2018 by certified mail. The South 39th Street Neighborhood Council, the council in which the subject property is located, was notified. And additionally, the northerly abutting Moose Canyon Neighborhood Council was notified as well. And posted notice, a notice of required public hearing for conditional uses must be posted at least 15 days before the public hearing, and the poster must be placed on each public street frontage abutting the subject property. And on November 20, posters were placed on Hillview Way, where the southeast corner of the subject property touches Hillview, and at the end of Saranac Drive near Wapakia Park. And I think this is the last one. Could staff seek comments from Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks? And staff did contact FWP and received comment from Randy Arnold, who's their regional supervisor for Region 2 FWP, and his comments are attached as Exhibits at Number 7. And he basically says, "Due to the location of the subject property being within a quarter mile of Moose Canyon Gully and its associated semi-riparian and forested draws leading uphill to forested areas of mounting stone, the FWP notes that there are many deer in the area, which in turn can attract bears and mountain lions." FWP commented that there is a high likelihood of human and wildlife conflict in this location, and as a result recommends that living with wildlife section be added to the development covenants for this TED in order to keep residents and to avoid possible wildlife problems. And FWP provided a recommended version of such covenants. And if city council would like to implement the FWP recommendations for living with wildlife, that we have included in the packet a revision to Condition of Approval Number 23 to include living with wildlife section. And I think I had just one last question. What are they planning to sell the homes for? So we did contact Paul Forsting with Territory Land Works after the Land Use and Planning meeting. And on, I guess it was yesterday or earlier today, we received an email saying that it was unknown exactly what the price points would be. It would be dependent on, you know, conditions of approval and types of construction and the like. So we don't have a firm answer on that. But just getting real quickly back to the presentation. Our recommendation this evening is approval. And pardon me. I'm just flipping through paper here. With that, staff does recommend approval of this conditional use based on the applicable sections of Title 20, as shown on this slide, the findings of fact in the staff report, and subject to the 23 conditions of approval. And I'm available for any questions that you may have. The applicant team is here as well, and I believe there are a number of folks in the audience who want to speak on this item.
Thank you, Ms. McNamara. I cannot imagine there could be more questions. I think you answered every one of them thoroughly. I imagine there will be more questions, actually. I imagine there will be more questions, actually, knowing this gang on behalf of applicant
Paul Forsting, Territorial Land Works. I'm pleased to be in front of you tonight. I'm here today. My professional engineer coworker, Jason Rice, is here with me tonight. We'll do our best to present the project, and we'll do our best to talk through any comments you might have about the project. I've got a lot of the same slides as I brought to the LUP Committee on Wednesday of last week, but I also brought some different ones, and I did remove a couple of them, too. And so if we want to, if we're going to look at different perspectives of homes or maybe something that I had showed at the LUP, I can pull that up. So let me just take you through a couple of the exhibits we had looked at. Here's an overview of the project site. This was prepared by our architect, Gavin Hanks, and it does a nice job of just showing how the homes would kind of look on the hillside. Here is a, we're pleased to have some updated exhibits here, and this is a downhill-looking version of one of the townhouse units. Here's an, across the same street from that, that unit, you would look at an uphill version of a unit here. And then here's the, just potential view of the, what the, the street view will look like from the end of the Hammerhead. I appreciate the planning memo that Anita prepared. She put together a lot of information in the last couple of days, and so if there's anything, as much as we can add to that memo and detail, and we'd like to do that. You know, we don't, maybe we'll wait and hear what else from that memo we want to expand on. There's a lot of stuff in there. You know, this project here complies with the zoning of the site, the RT 10. That's an important thing to say because we're using the townhouse exemption development, and really the primary criteria we have is to make sure we're compliant with zoning. And then within zoning, we have the TED standards, and we're happy that we comply with those. We've also got other zoning standards to consider, setbacks, hillside design standards, and we've demonstrated that we comply with those items as well. So that, that's pleasing, and we're not here to, I guess, dispute how we are or not complying with those. This project adheres to the guidance in our Missoula 2035 growth policy. I've highlighted the site there with a star. We're right in the middle of an area, really a growth area for Missoula. This area is projected for a lot of growth. Some of it's been realized already, and there's a lot of land in this area that will be developed at some point, and we're here with this project. Our project is under the minimum recommended density in that growth policy. We're just under three houses per acre. We're in the residential median density, and that's three to 11. The upper end of that, if we're at the 11 units per acre, we would be, that's like something like 200 and maybe 260 if I did my math right. Note that we're right next to a residential high-density area, and that says we should, that area should have 24 units per acre or greater. That's a significant amount of units. If our same property was in that designation and somebody realized the growth designation from the comp plan, we'd be at somewhere like 618 units. And so that's, that's an important thing to consider here. We've got, the growth policy was put together with the intention of serving our community and putting housing, finding place for houses, and, you know, it's, we're not here to say we need more units on our property, per se, but it is important to note that as we look and as we make these plans for our community, as a planner myself, you know, it's going to be tough to realize where we need houses. And so, you know, looking at this area, we like the design we have, we like the density, we like the end product in a lot of ways. But, you know, as an overall community discussion, you know, one might, one might just kind of look at this area and realize there will be a lot of growth here, and, yeah, we're excited about the product that we're bringing and how we comply with the growth policy. This is the layout we submitted and determined to be sufficient. This layout took seven months to review from our first meeting with the city staff to here today. Within that process, we had six meetings with city staff, we had two neighborhood meetings, we had four submissions of this layout and back-and-forth comments. This layout is, shows our project. It shows sidewalks on both sides of the street. It shows, it shows a east-west trail easement that we have on the north side of our property. It shows a trail that we're going to build that we've coordinated with parks with on the west side of our property, and that trail will connect into the Tonkin Trail. It shows five park areas that will be graded, and those park areas will be graded to meet the TED dimensions and standards. There'll be no drainage in those areas. Those are graded park areas to meet the townhouse exemption development standards. It shows mid-block crossings. These mid-block crossings were added per comments that we had received from the planning office about the block length requirements. This layout shows everything that we were required to add. If you look at our review record, you'll see that this layout was reviewed, improved, detailed what we had to do and how we had to, how we had to adjust our layout was pretty, I guess you'd say. There was, there's quite a bit in the record on how we got to the point with this layout, and we like it. It's a nice layout. This layout, this is an exhibit showing the improvements to the Hillview Way intersection with our road, and it also shows how the trail will intersect with this area. We've got, our sidewalk will lead all the way up to this intersection. We're going to put, our road itself will have crossing markings, and then that sidewalk is extended up to the intersection of where Tonkin Trail will cross, will there be a crossing that we installed to get across the Hillview Way road? We've got a beacon that we'll put on a rectangular rapid flash beacon box with a button that you push, and that will, that'll light up the beacon, and folks will know that a pedestrian is wanting to cross in this location, and they'll actually be striping improvements to this, to this intersection as well. This right here shows, this is an exhibit of the trail per Condition Number 9. This trail does not show up on our layouts, and it was, it was added, well, there was some discussion, there was a suggestion that, yes, that there, you know, maybe stairs and a trail through the center of the project should be considered, and there's many suggestions. You know, it's something we've got to be clear on, there's a lot of suggestions that happen during a review process, when you're having six meetings, when you're meeting with folks. There's a lot of suggestions that happen, but the idea that that suggestion would turn into this condition, that ultimately is something that we, this condition will, to say frankly, we don't, we don't like this condition, we don't, we don't appreciate the condition, and we don't want to have it as a requirement of the project. This is, this improvement itself is going to make up 214 stairs. It's going to be a significant, it's going to add significant cost to the project, ultimately adding to the house cost. It's something that, we don't see it as an amenity that is necessary for this development. We see it as something that's going to be steep, expensive, and potentially dangerous. You know, it's, it's not something that we take lightly that all of a sudden at the end of the day, we have this condition here that we didn't agree to as part of our record. It's not something that, it's not something, again, that we like and would want with the It's, the corridor itself is a corridor we've designed for our utilities, and again, matching the way a review process works, we submit full applications, and we're given comments to adjust this, to change the trail here, to move this trail there, to show us how the beacon looks. And so the idea that at the end of the day, we're going to have this very expensive trail through the middle of our project is, just doesn't match our experience with the review process, and so either way, we're here today to discuss it, and we want to talk with you, council members, about if this is a necessary requirement of the project. We don't believe it to be the case. We did come prepared to talk about an alternative trail location, which hopefully can, which we believe satisfies the same, I guess, it adds to that conversation, the idea that you have to walk up, you know, half a mile from the bottom of our Hammerhead to get up to that crossing that we'll have on Hillview Way. Well, this, this just takes that and makes the shortest possible route, the shortest possible way from the bottom of our turnaround to the, to the crossing. This will be of the same design standards that the trail on the west side of the property is proposed. The trail on the west side of the property was designed with coordination with the Parks Department, and it's, they describe it as a connector from the Tonkin Trail down to the Boppa Kia Park, and something that can be used for a year-round use. This is what we'd have the same intentions of designing the park, or, excuse me, this trail with that same level of standard. Something that we see in as amenity and something that can help our project, I guess, accommodate the standards that we're talking about, at the same time, you know, maybe make the walk a little quicker for folks. That being said, the safest way from top to bottom on this site is going to be our sidewalks. Our sidewalks are going to follow our road, and that road's done at a grade that is, that's, I guess, made for everybody to use. Anytime you've got a trail or even stairs, that's not for everybody necessarily to use. It's for those who, who, you know, want to, want to do a pretty significant set of stairs or want to go for a walk up on the side of the hill. But the sidewalk itself, it connects from top to bottom, and it provides the safest route from top to bottom. So we see this as an additional amenity, whereas the trail, the stairs, we see as something that takes away from our end product that we were trying to provide here. This is the layout that I showed you with that trail added, so maybe you can see it in a little better context here. This is, you can see the trail we had on the west side of the project, and then now this new trail on the east side of our project. Just wanted to show you how it fit in and how we can get from top to bottom. I appreciate your attention. I appreciate your consideration on the topic. Like I said, we'd love to talk about more of the items from the memo. It was comprehensive, and so, you know, I'm not going to read through it, but I do want to make sure that the purpose of the comments are, we have an opportunity to discuss those, and so as you, as you think of your questions and comments, I'd like to participate in that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forsting. And with that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone care to comment on this townhome exemption development project?
Let's get up here a little closer. My name is Tyler Stosich, and I live right at the base of the plan development, right at the end of Saranac Drive, and I just want to voice my opposition to it. First of all, I don't think that it meshes well with the surrounding natural and structural surroundings around there. It's, it's, we're cramming 68 townhomes onto a very steep grade. I see it as steep, it's, it's a steep grade, and it's dense, and it's, and it does not mesh well with the surrounding territory. As far as the structures per acre in the surrounding areas, a lot of those areas that were looked at on the, on the map that was shown earlier were below the base of the hill, so they're on level ground. This is, I mean, I ask any of you to walk up that hill, it's steep. It's real steep. So, so, you know, as far as saying a certain amount of structures per acre, you know, compared to level ground is not a very good comparison. A more pressing matter for me is, is right at the base of the hill. We've, I think I've lived there for three, almost four years now, and I am never, it never ceases to amaze me at what a 15-minute heavy rain will do to that park, and not just the park, but the streets surrounding it. I've seen two feet plus water in the park as it is, and in the streets. I mean, I see it over the curbs in the streets. It's, it runs off, there's plenty of water coming down as it is, and we're adding, I don't know what the percentage was, over 20% of that land is going to be developed in impermeable, a lot of impermeable surfaces, like they already brought up, you know, roads, roofs, driveways, everything else. It's just a lot of moved ground on a really steep grade, and I think it's unsafe. I think it's unsafe for especially the people below it, and a lot of people live below it. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Kelly Walsh. I live at 139 Saranac, so right at the end of the road there. I would ask that you not approve the TED conditional use request based on the Missoula zoning code, Section 20.85.070H. Under Number 2B, it says, "It is in the interest of the public convenience and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood or community." And this is where the water diversion concerns are a big issue. As Tyler said, when there's heavy rainfall, we have seen the park flood. There's even a manhole cover in the ground, and water actually shoots up a few feet out of that cover. So with the additional water flow, there's really some big, I would say, safety concerns for our property, but then also just flooding as well. Like he said, the water flows into the streets of Saranac and onto Tahoe as well. And then also letter C, the structure is compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, and those are all houses and homes, whereas these structures are the townhomes, so it doesn't fit with the neighborhood that's already happening there. And then the other concern is that we've heard the park will be a staging area for heavy equipment and that type of thing, which will be a total disruption to that neighborhood and to the people who use the park. Just, I mean, having heavy equipment, trucks and things, which I assume they're going to use some sort of access road up to the property from the park to drive the equipment and stuff up, I wouldn't assume that they drive it out and back up Hillview. So those are my concerns, and I hope you guys can consider them. Thank you.
Thank you.
First time here. I got a couple of questions. Anita, that talked first.
If you'd identify yourself for the record, you can address questions to us, and then we'll answer them.
Okay. Lori Richards. And I'm here, I had a whole speech, and I've been kind of surprised by what I've heard since I got here on this. What is, Anita, she works for the county?
Works for the city of Missoula.
For the city of Missoula. You guys work for the city of Missoula, for the people, right?
Yes, ma'am.
What you heard was a sales brochure. You didn't hear facts. You heard a whole bunch of information, a whole bunch of sales rhetoric, and I can't believe that this goes on. But like I said, it's the first time I've been here, and I'm a real estate appraiser. I see what happens after developers are gone and after we pick up the tabs and what we have to pay for because somebody sold somebody a bill of goods on a development that did not work. Looked good on paper, but it doesn't work in real life. We have 14, just because there's so much that they gave you for information, but there's so many things that... so many things that aren't told in the items and I know I only have like three minutes or something like that, but I can go through every one of these details and tell you the rest of the story and I hope you'll give me a little bit of latitude. I don't talk very long, but I do need you to understand that please do not okay this the way it is. You don't have all the facts and Missoula is the one that's gonna have to pay for this. Our people, our taxes are gonna have to pay while they get the benefits of what they're doing and their subdivision and we pick up all the other issues. It was glossed over, the kids walk into school, it was glossed over how many of these items, let's say 618 units that we could put there. Oh, great, 60, 618 units, but we're only gonna put 68. When they bought this place in 14, it was 47 lots, 31 single houses, 31 single houses that handicapped people can live in. You can't do that with the townhouses. There's nobody can live in there except the people that can go in a two-story house. That's it. It is totally just on the people that are there that there's no individuality, it's got long blocks. Think of the kids that are going to be walking from Hillview. I've seen cars come over that hill and they're down the hill and the wrecker has to come get them and we're gonna have kids walking on this street? It's, and then what are they gonna do up there? We have hammerheads? I didn't even notice that before. Hammerheads? Most of this slope is steep that they talked about and the thing that I have a problem with is it's really easy to say, oh, it comes up to 15%. But the people that you're listening to are the ones that are making money off of this. I understood that it's 25%. That's a big difference. I can tell you, it's a hike up that hill. I don't know the exact measurements of it, but you don't either and they're telling you something that they make money on that we haven't checked and we don't know for sure. And hopefully, and if I'm wrong, Anita read off of the memo that she read to you saying we went on these conditions that had territory, what is it, territory, landworks letterhead on it. That's sales. That's not what our people who work for the county and the city should be telling. We need objective people telling you what's going on with this. One thing that is, is we've got 68 houses up here, a lot of them are single car garage with a one concrete drive. Only 14 extra spaces for all these people? Who's gonna live in these? We've got two layers, two levels. We've got people that have kids, one car space and there's been several of them already gone. Condos, townhouses, there's no place for anybody to park. And what's it do? It carries over to another, a problem for other people. And then we have steep hillsides and we have hammerhead turnarounds. And guess where the parks are? Right there at the hammerhead turnarounds. That's a good place. Plus that, where are those kids gonna play? It's grass. They need a place that will have a park. If not, they're all gonna be in the Wapakia neighborhood, which is great, but then back to, well, we're not gonna be impacting the other subdivisions. We have the kids, the schools, the sewage, we've already talked about that they could have a problem with sewage. The runoff, I've already seen where it almost runs right on down into the street into the brig subdivision. There's already water in the basements of most of the houses on the Wapakia neighborhood. There's water underneath of those houses. I've had call for things to be changed along in the Wapakia neighborhoods because there's water in the basements. It has floodplain along the streets. I don't know how they got it through when they did, but it was the 50s, but they made it where it was all floodplain, but now it just runs along the street. And now we're just gonna make the situation worse. So we've got traffic, we've got the kids, we've got lung. They, they said they don't wanna put any breakup in it, the steps. I can understand that, but that is a long subdivision without any breaks. It's industrial looking. Look at what are the houses? This is perfect because look at what, what's the houses beside it? The house right above there, one of the first ones, second ones, third ones, fourth and I think the fifth one was over $600,000 that it sold. Every one of those have sold in the last few years or was built, the one was built. They're over $600,000 homes. The one down below, which is the Wapakia neighborhood, we just sold, not we, I still own just Florida prices, the one of them just sold with a thousand square foot, single car garage and no, it has a basement but no egress windows. It just sold for $315,000.
So I'm gonna ask you to kinda hit us with your objections quickly and, yeah, we've got a lot more folks who wanna speak.
Yes. Well, I think I talked for all of us that the staging area, we vehemently do not want the staging area down below this. We have no sidewalks, thank God, and we all walk in the streets, our dogs, and if they come in there with their equipment on our dead-end streets, it's gonna be a serious problem. Because our whole neighborhood and plus all of the ones around 36th and that area will come over and walk in our area, they are, our park is almost always busy with people in it and we do not need, they've got 26 acres. They can have their staging area up above. That's it.
Thank you very much.
I hope that you will not agree to approving this until you have all the facts. Thank you.
Mr. Stevens.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Stevens. I live at 123 Saranac Drive. I made a public comment at the committee meeting last Wednesday and I believe it has been read into the record, so I'll not repeat that information tonight in the interest of time. But I do have a few additional observations and number one, I do indeed support the paved pathway that is proposed for the middle of the development. I think that would probably be the most logical and conveniently located pathway through the development for the convenience of the residents. On the other hand, I will enthusiastically support the developer's additional proposal for the switchback pathway at the east end of the development. It sounds like a good idea, too. I urge the council, if at all possible, do not approve this development until an easement is granted to the Human Resources Council. I don't know if this is possible, I don't know if it's legally feasible for you to do, but I consider any developer that would deny an easement to that property to be, not be a good neighbor and I certainly support an easement being granted to them. Now, the issue of fish wildlife and parks was brought up and as far as I know, that area is a designated bear zone. I know I was the project manager for the Tonkin Trail and when we built that, we were required to put bear-proof garbage cans at each end of the trail. And I am wondering what sort of provision is being made for this development in terms of garbage disposal and bear-resistant containers for that development? It's a good question to ask the developer and to think about. The issue of price for these units was brought up and there was no answer, but when we had a meeting with Territorial Landworks at Wapakia Park last summer, it was said that these units would be cost, be costing at a minimum of $300,000 apiece. Now, this is not, of course, affordable housing. I think it's really a kind of an alarming juxtaposition with the information we heard at the beginning of this council meeting when advocates for the homeless came forward and expressed their need for some kind of a shelter for homeless people in this community. And here we are, talking later in the evening about $300,000-plus units. We do have a problem in this community and this development is certainly not going to address that problem. As far as Wapakia Park goes, I've heard from a couple of different sources now that they're contemplating using the park as a staging area for construction of this development and I am absolutely vehemently opposed to that proposal. That park is for the public use, it's not for the use of a private developer. I do not wanna see any construction equipment brought in there to tear up the landscape and in the irrigation system. I don't know if there's any truth to this statement or not, but I, I think we need an answer on that right away. And that's, that's it for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Mr. Gors.
I think I'm in trouble.
I just have a good memory.
You mean, I don't have to introduce myself? Joe Gorsch for the record. And I've got one minor correction.
Joe, I'm gonna ask you to get a little closer to the microphone, please. Thank you.
One minor correction. It was earlier announced that property next to this area that was gonna be constructed was too steep for construction. That is not correct. And Mr. Mayor, I think you knew a fellow by the name of Steve King.
I'm sorry.
He designed a road system. It went through the previous group of people that sat next to you and it was signed off on to build 14, no, 42 homes on that property that was mentioned too steep to be built on. Well, on that, and you know, we jumped on that, we purchased the property and that 17 acres now is our common area, is why there's no homes on it. There's quite a few things. I talked to these two gentlemen standing under the trees. I gave them my business card and I too, in a licensed engineer with my PC and I gave you my cards, standing under the trees this summer. And they didn't have details at that time. They were going to come up with them and I didn't hear many details tonight. Now, there are a couple of things. Out of my kitchen window this morning, making a cup of coffee, there were 14 deer, it's a big deal, they're all over. We also have two pet bobcats that come through, plus some things that go through the yard train on our automatic lights all the time. That's, we moved into their neighborhood and this is going to happen. I don't know who's gonna move. But anyway, there are a number of things that do not fit. They said similar to the neighborhood. I don't see anything else like that that's similar in the neighborhood. It appeared as the things they talked about, they looked for exemptions to qualify what they were doing. Noticed a number of times, they said it, they found that it was okay some way. 68 proposed homes. We bought our 17 acres, nine people to, just for elbow room. And they had a blue dashed line that was built there for a drainage system and I think I proposed that and the engineer built that across to drain the water from our property on down and they were gonna make some kind of reservoir and that out of it. Gotta help you down there when that overflows. But anyway, this is not similar to the neighborhood, to anywhere near that. It looks like they just painted them different colors, but you know, they're all the same. I think these were too cheap to buy more than one cookie cutter. You just kept cutting cookies and painting them different colors.
Sir, Joe, talk to us.
As an engineering, as an engineer. An engineer is a problem solver. I would think you would come up with different kinds of homes or at least buy two cookie cutters or maybe three and scatter them around. This doesn't look anything like the neighborhood. I'm through, you make your decision and I hope it's not approved. I'm going.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you every, what, five or 10 years, I guess, huh? You're not at all. Yes, sir.
My name is Don Henrickson. I live right next to Jeff Stevens. I'm the guy that wrote you the letter and I hope you read it. If you haven't, I hope you will. I have a lot of concerns. I'm the guy that's lived there for 53 years. I've seen quite a bit happen. Bought the house before it was done. There was the old ditch that was maybe an irrigation ditch. For several years, I couldn't build a garage because FEMA wouldn't let me. I don't know where FEMA came from at that point. It has something to do with the city, but I couldn't do it until the SID happened and I, and the South Hills drainage system was put in, with pipe down 39th and whatever. Okay, so then we, I got off the 50-year floodplain. That was the reason I couldn't build before that. If I was gonna build a garage, it had to be three feet higher than the other floor ahead in my garage. Okay. So anyway, we got off the floodplain. I'm, I'm against this, this, well, or whatever we call it, the territorial, the Hillview Crossing and the main reason is because it's gonna create too much hard ground on the hill that's too steep. The times that we have had runoff water in the years past, it's always been in the wintertime. The ground freezes, it snows, get a warm day, it rains, water comes down the hill. Okay, we got flooded. The ditch was little. Now the ditch has been repaired. It's pretty big. It's not big, though, and it's just dirt. It's just what's on the hill. Okay, so if this development goes through, we, I went to one of the meetings down in the park and somebody said, and I was concerned about water. My thing is about water. And so I was gonna be assured that everything is gonna be okay. Well, I didn't hear very much stuff tonight about water, about the storm drain system. That to me is the crux. I mean, I don't like looking up, I live right next to the hill, I don't like looking up and seeing two-story houses. I can't see the sun in the wintertime because they'll be there. There are a bunch of other things that'll happen because of it. I don't have a right to the sun, but I have a sunroom and I built it for the sun. Anyway, if, if this area has all this hard ground in the summertime, I'm talking about three streets, the street coming in and the two that go down around the bottom and how many acres or how many thousand square feet of hard surface that is, add in the driveways, add in the roofs, add in the sidewalks. Okay, they said they were gonna be able to control how much runoff there was gonna be and I heard a little number of how much water's gonna come out at the bottom. I'm worried about what comes out at the bottom. I don't want any water coming in that ditch that's there now. Take a look, follow it all the way across below. It's almost as level as this floor. So any water that runs off of that hill comes down there and where does it go? Okay, some of it's gonna go way over behind Cohasset and over behind the fire station on Russell, maybe. I don't think it's gonna, it doesn't just run away. The outlet is down over the park at Wapakia. It is a 20-inch diameter pipe and I think it's the only one in the whole ditch. If this development was gonna be built, I would say every pipe has gotta run over and down at the park. It cannot run down into the ditch because I don't believe anybody can figure out when it's gonna... can figure out when it's gonna rain real hard. And when it's gonna rain real hard, and it's up on that steep hill, eight degrees, twenty degrees, and down at the bottom, it's closer to thirty. And from the ditch down, it's more like this. So when the water comes off the hill, it comes off the hill fast. And there's nobody gonna stop it. You might put in some pipes, and you might figure you've done a good job, but I don't think you can control it. That's what I worry about. The other thing I worry about is when the water comes off the hill and it joins up with the water that comes down Sarnac. Sarnac is like a riverbed for Wapakia. All the water that ends up in the street in Wapakia District goes down by Tyler's House. He gets to watch it. I see it go by. I've thought about putting in irrigation pipes out in the street, picking up the water, and using it in my yard, because there's that much sometimes. I mean, the curve is full top, top to top. That water's coming down into Wapakia, goes down in to the low spot. If any water comes off this development on the hill, and it's got to, it's got to, because there's a lot of hard surface up there. When it comes off and joins that water that's coming from Sarnac, I can almost guarantee you that Forty-Second Street will be underwater this deep. There's another little court that's back in on Forty-Second Street and Briggs. You wouldn't think would get it, will. Because when we first moved there, that whole area was a lake, one of those times. The weather just has to be right. But I think this is adding too much hard surface. That's my problem. I just don't think it's good, and I hope, if, if you, Steve, approve this, these, once these streets get put in here, they're there. And if we should happen to get into a rainy period, when, um, things change, we don't know what happens with the weather anymore. Things stall. They didn't always used to do that. If we have one flood, everybody's basement is full. Every house along the hill has a basement except Tyler's. And I saw a little picture that Jeff showed me about a pipe coming down to the ditch. It came down right close to Tyler's house. The ditch. Just right, right at his house. I get concerned about that.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Um, my name's Jan Brose, and I live at, uh, twenty-one oh nine Forty-Second Street, as you mentioned. So I'm on the other side of Wapakia Park, um, up against, um, the trail. And I, I have a couple, two major concerns. One is, um, I think that it's ridiculous to build something that's that dense on that steep of a slope. We live, uh, we have a twenty-five degree slope, uh, as our backyard. That's where I do my gardening, by the way. And, um, when we went to build our house back in, uh, it would have been nineteen ninety-nine, uh, we were told, we had designed the house to actually be built into just the, the foot of the, the slope. And we were told that we could not do that, because, um, it was, because danger of earthquakes is what we were told. And that we had to keep a number of feet, and I don't remember how, how many feet, away from the toe of the slope. Well, then later, somebody came out from the city and tested the, the dirt and decided that it wasn't all clay, and clay just turns to, um, yeah, it just, you know, it just becomes all wiggly, um, if, if there's an earthquake. And because it wasn't all clay, we could move it up a little bit, a little closer to the toe of the hill. So I wonder what happened between then and now, and why there isn't a, that kind of concern for, for that kind of construction up on, which is, much of that is a twenty-five percent slope, even though they're saying fifteen. Well, parts of it probably are fifteen. So that is a, is a concern for me. But then, also, I have a really big concern, and Joe Gors mentioned this, about the wildlife. There's no accommodation, I haven't heard any accommodation at all, um, for the wildlife. And we have open space above Hillview Way. We have mountains above that, and the deer, in particular, come down, they work down through this whole property, and they also come from east, they, or from west to east and back and forth. And, but they work down through this whole property to come into our areas and eat our bushes and our trees, and especially in the winter, you know, trying to feed themselves. And we already had, um, when the Tonkin Trail went in, they built, I think it was the Parks Department, but they built a five-foot woven wire fence all the way along the trail. And it created incredible problems for the deer right away. In some areas, even the adult deer couldn't get over it. And if they could, the babies got stuck on the other side. And I had, uh, friends who, I have a friend who takes pictures of the deer all the time up on Hillview Way, and he, he has taken, had taken pictures of them just getting panicky, running back and forth into Hillview Way, you know, because they can't move across. The way that this drawing is, it, it, the perspective isn't really right on the way that road comes off. That's like, it doesn't come off. It, it's more along Hillview Way for a while before it drops down. But anyway, you have all these deer that are coming down, and need to come down. I mean, it's just their migration corridor. There's no mitigation. It's like a blockade with those buildings. Oh, and before I, I, the, the fence, we, we've made a change in the fence. Pat Tonkin agreed to lowering it. It's when Jackie Corday was the open space person, agreed to lowering it in four areas. We went and lowered the, so that the deer could go over and raised it up at the bottom, so the babies could go underneath, and smaller wildlife could go underneath. But here, there's nothing, and there's, you have this long blockade, um, of, of buildings, and, um, it's going to be a real problem. And I think, I mean, you can get rid of some of those and create some openings, you know, break it up at least into sections, and have some openings between the sections, and just let go of a few of those buildings, so that at least wildlife have a place to pass through. And that's, that was my concern.
Thank you.
Good evening. Um, I'm Teresa Jacobs, and I, um, I live at one thirty-seven Cohasset, and I've lived there for twenty-five years. And I've already, um, had the occasion to speak to some of you during the committee meeting, um, last week. And Mayor, it shouldn't surprise you that I can come up with lots more questions. You said, how could anybody have more questions? Um, so first of all, I wanted to say, whoever on the council heard my concerns about the wildlife and the fact that there wasn't even any mention at, of it in the, the development project, and that that went from the staff and involve fish, wildlife, and parks, I just wanna thank you for hearing me. And I'm glad I'm not the only one. There's more people here that, who see this potential of funneling and the, you know, it's just too dense there. Um, and it could, you know, cause problems with human beings. And, um, going up and down that road, too, especially with over three hundred cars moving in and out of this development. So something that I haven't seen anybody mention, um, and I thought somebody was gonna talk about it, um, last, at the last committee meeting, because I had talked to this neighbor. But, um, my understanding is that there's a six-inch pipe for sewer on the west side of Wapakia Park. And there hasn't, I didn't hear any presentations, um, from staff or from the engineer, or any questions about that. But the particular neighbor that was talking about that was questioning whether that was sufficient. Again, we love our water and our aquifer, and we wanna protect it. And, um, I, I would just like to hear more about that, because if you consider, you know, sixty-eight households and any number of people, you know, using water and, and sending it down into the sewer system, plus with the pressure coming off of this hill, I'm, I'm concerned about, you know, existing pipes down on the flat here under Wapakia Park or in, in our homes, our step sewer systems. Of course, there's a, you know, there's, uh, valves to stop feedback from coming from other people's homes, but hopefully that would hold with the pressure coming down the hill. But I haven't heard anything about the sewer system, and I think that needs to be discussed, so that we're not blowing, uh, pipes in the Wapakia area on the west side or in those neighborhoods that would be compromising our aquifer. Um, and I, I mean, it's, I, I need to hear, um, an engineer before I would, or even yet, I would like to hear an engineer and two independent, uh, you know, second and third opinion, um, on that, because this is, that's pretty, you can't take that back once we have that contamination. And that's a lot of, that, that is a very steep hill. Um, so then, uh, I mentioned this a little bit the other day, and I was hoping, I, I did send, send a letter that's in your packets, asking about traffic on Hillview Way. And, and I'm thankful more information was shared, but it's still not enough information for me. I'd like to see the math on that, um, that this is, the new engineered Hillview Way, um, is, can hold over ten thousand vehicles per day, and current usage is half of that, five thousand is what they're saying. Um, Mr., oh, I'm sorry, I have to call you, I can't remember your last name, but Paul from, uh, Land Works, Territorial Land Works just, um, spoke about, quoting him, he says this, um, uh, you heard him say, that this land here was in the yellow, he showed that map, is slated for a lot of growth in the area. Um, and, and that was just in the area here that he was talking about. That doesn't even mention all the way uphill view and into the school district, um, around Chief Charlo. That's expanding up there. So my question, is it, is it fair for the city to, uh, approve this, which would be over three hundred cars, that three hundred nineteen cars are allowed in this, uh, dense, um, development here? When you consider across the street, that's for sale, I understand, and if, I don't know what these gentlemen and, and from hu, hu, uh, Human Resources would do, but way up that hill, I feel like this is disproportionate allowance of vehicles onto Hillview Way. Um, and I'd like to see the math. I'd like to see the projections of growth, based on talking to realtors and, um, and, you know, potential lands, because that seems disproportionate. Um, uh, number three, or number four concern here, um, is just to reiterate again what I said last time. I don't believe this is compatible with the character of the area. And so any number of people here agreed with me. Again, looking at those, it's point three eight, uh, point three eight units per acre where Joe Gors and, and the other homeowners are here. And that's what you see from the ground, and that's what you see from the middle of the city. You don't see the flat. And so I, I don't know, I think the visual, um, aesthetics here count when we're talking about the character of the area. And again, this is a different type of structure, which is not in keeping with the character of the area, mostly single homes. And again, it's too dan, too dense. Um, and everything that's more dense is down below, but still not, not, you know, as dense, uh, except for one little spot over here on the other side of the park, um, which was a new, new area. This is, uh, this is not an accusation. I just have to raise the question in looking at the agenda today. But the Territorial Land Works was on the agenda, uh, earlier as providing a service to the city of, um, redoing the water system on the, on, on Third Street. And the fact that the same organization is asking for approval of a project, speaking with our lawyer, just, you know, ethical conflicts of interest, I don't know how that goes, but I just, I just think that's worth mentioning, that the same development, uh, group is on the agenda. And I don't know how that would play out, but I just do need to recognize that, just so we're being careful of our Ps and Qs. Um, so I'm assuming that was something new that came in Anita's packet, something from the fire, um, district, saying that if the hydrants were on the side of the road that didn't allow parking, that they would have to be widened. And I just, that didn't get addressed, and I was just wondering if that is going to be a problem or not. It was item, it was the last item on number three. So it didn't get addressed, and I just wanted to know.
So Teresa, we're pushing about seven minutes, if you can.
Am I really seriously, John? Sorry. Um, I, I guess that, that's it. That's, that's my big concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Justin Klein. I don't really have, uh, and I've lived in this neighborhood for about ten years now, and probably will live there for another ten years until my kids grow up and graduate. Um, we absolutely love this area. I don't have a whole lot new to add to what has already been said. Um, I just wanna basically have my feelings and my family's feelings, who I'm here representing today, um, and that of a couple of my neighbors whom I've talked with. Uh, just reiterating concerns about the water that, that people have. Um, we have tons of water in our yard and the cul-de-sac, um, in, in these areas. And I'm really a little bit concerned about what that's gonna do. Um, and for what it's worth, um, the, the aesthetics of this, these, these townhomes going in do, really do not match the area. It's, it's a wonderful little neighborhood. We have, uh, great, uh, groups of people who live there. Um, it's, it's just, in, in this addition to it is, is, is not a good neighborly kind of addition to a wonderful neighborhood that's been around for a long time. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Morton.
Good evening. My name is Jim Morton. I'm with the, uh, Human Resource Council. I have submitted, uh, submitted testimony to the, uh, Land Use and Planning Committee, so I'll just summarize that, that testimony. Um, the Human Resource Council has been offering services, uh, for over fifty-three years to low-income households in the community, including, uh, senior citizens, low-income folks, homeless persons. And in about nineteen ninety-five, a family who was supportive of what we do donated the four acres you've heard mentioned that lie west to now what is known as the Hillview Crossing Development. Um, that parcel, uh, has no motorized, uh, vehicle access to a rotor street, and obviously that has limited its use and its value to the Human Resource Council. Um, HRC has tried and failed over several years to gain access to a rotor street for the, this parcel, to enable it to achieve its highest and best value to HRC. The Hillview Crossing Development as proposed has an internal road system that could provide access to the HRC parcel if providing such access is made a condition of approval of the conditional use permit. HRC, as I mentioned to the committee, is willing to purchase such an easement. We, uh, uh, projected that easement is twenty-five to thirty feet in length. The Missoula zoning ordinance requires assessment of any conditional use for its potential adverse impact on the neighborhood and general welfare of the community. It's our opinion that land-locking four acres in the heart of the South Hills does have an adverse impact on the neighborhood and the general welfare of the Missoula community. Granting approval of a conditional use permit for the H, for the Hillview Crossing project without requiring a way to alleviate the access problem will prevent HRC from realizing the full value of the land it owns and was gifted, and negatively impact HR's, HRC's ability to maintain the level of service to the people it's been serving for fifty-three years. In our opinion, the remedy for this problem is to add a condition to the approval of the Hillview Crossing project, requiring grant of an easement or other use agreement to facilitate road access to HRC's parcel. And again, HRC has offered the owners, uh, uh, an agreement to purchase such an easement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Joe Los. Uh, I'm a retired social worker and, uh, currently a volunteer with, uh, Housing Advocate Network with Missoula Interfaith Collaborative. And I'm also on the HRC board. I just wanna follow up to, to Jim's comments, 'cause I'm on the board because I, I care about the the mission of the Human Resource Council. I think it does a lot for folks in the community that are struggling with financial issues, especially in the area of promoting affordable housing. In its current strategic plan, HRC believes that communities must work together in partnership to enable all persons to live with dignity, responsibility, and opportunity. To support this vision, HRC offers a myriad of services for families and individuals that promote stability and independence. The proposal for the Hillview Crossing Development as it is currently presented lacks any assurance that it will do anything other than land-lock one of HRC's important assets, an asset donated, as Jim said, to HRC to help it realize its vision of enabling all persons to live with dignity, responsibility, and opportunity. Are we to simply accept what is proposed and wait for the developer to turn around and offer to buy our asset at a low-ball price? In a city that has expressed great concern for the cost of housing for lower-income households, it seems just wrong to me that you would leave an organization like HRC in such a vulnerable position. Surely, part of requiring Hillview Crossing to maintain the health and welfare of the neighborhood and community would require that they address this issue before their proposal can be approved. Thank you for considering my concerns.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Dr. Amy Haynes. I've lived and worked in Missoula, Montana for at least 35 years. I don't live in the area, so I don't have that kind of concern, but I do live in Far Views, which is also a hillside community. And I don't know if you guys remember the year, it was several years ago, when Missoula was pretty much surrounded by fire. And from our backyard, I could see the fire that was happening over in Lolo. And at night, it was beautiful, you could see these trees just crowning, it was gorgeous, full of smoke, of course. But in our backyard, we got what's called a firebrand, right? We've got burning chunks of wood coming into our backyard. And they didn't start a fire at that time, but, you know, I'm looking at this grassland, and I know that you can't outrun a grass fire. You just, you just can't. And if a firebrand came in there, how well could they evacuate that neighborhood? It looks like one road, a lot of, a lot of homes. I, you know, so, so here we go, we've got, we've got fire, we've got flood, we've got earthquakes. I mean, are you looking for frogs and locusts, or what more do you need, you know? It's, it's like, I would be very deeply concerned about the people moving into there, you know, the wildlife, et cetera, all that kind of stuff. So, I'm sorry, but I think, I think that you need to really think this through as far as living in Montana and why we live in Missoula. One of the, one of the really marvelous things about living in Missoula is that we've got these tremendous neighborhoods. We've got, we've got the west side, we've got the east side, we've got, we've got some really great neighborhoods. And what I'd like to see, one of the reasons why I'm up here, because this isn't the reason why I came tonight, but one of the reasons why I'm up here is because I want the city council to really appreciate what it takes to make a good neighborhood. And for me, what I like to see is I like children, because a sustainable community needs to be healthy for its children. And in this particular development, I'm not, I'm not really seeing the playgrounds, I mean, where do the children play in a neighborhood like this? I'm a big Cat Stevens fan myself, and that's a good question for me, is where do the children play? And how are the children going to get out of there if it floods or if there's a big fire? They're not going to outrun it, that's for sure. I think they go like 40 miles an hour or something like that. So, anyway, give those some, some consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? How many more folks want to speak? Would you raise your hands for me, please? All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jamie Jacoby. I live at 131 Saranack Drive, just at the, at the corner of Wapakia Park. I am a first-time homebuyer and, and have been there now for a couple of years. And I just have to say, I really love the feel of our neighborhood and, and the, the open space, and that's a big reason that I purchased where I did, for the park and the open space that's behind us. And I am adamantly opposed to this development because of what I feel like it will do to our community and our neighborhood and, and the change that, that will, that it will bring for all, all the reasons that a lot of other people have mentioned, as well as the, the increase in not only traffic, maybe not for our neighborhood, but for, for the Hillview Way, and also the, just the human traffic that will obviously be increased. And we're talking about where these people will go to, to play, or children, whatnot. I'm sure they'll all be coming down to Wapakia Park. And I feel like there will be a huge increase in not only light pollution, noise pollution, the, the construction, I can only imagine how long that's going to take, and the staging area that we've been talking about, all these things. I also live at kind of a low point in the street and have a storm drain right out in front of my driveway. And it literally only takes, you know, a half hour of a steady rain for there to be six inches plus of water in front of my driveway. And so, it does create a pond out right on the corner of Wapakia Park. And I know that, that, as everyone's been saying, with the water drainage issues, that's, that's not going to improve, it's only going to get worse. So, those are my concerns. Thank you for considering everyone's concerns.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Last call. All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. I am aware that a council member would like to return this item, Ms. Anderson.
Mr. Mayor, I want to thank everyone who came and made public comment tonight. I also want to thank Development Services staff for their unbiased and objective opinions, walking us through all of the findings of fact. I think we all can agree that we need more housing stock at all levels, but with this issue right now, we have a several-page staff memo, three legal findings, and we only get one chance to get this right. So I think that this needs to be moved back to committee and have a more, another opportunity to really answer and dive into some of these issues.
That is councilwoman's prerogative. Mr. DeBary, when would you hear this?
I'm thinking at this point, January the 16th.
Yeah? All right, the item has been returned to committee and will be under consideration at that Land Use and Planning Committee meeting. It's 10 o'clock, why don't we take a 10-minute break, and we'll be back for our last public hearing.
All right, let's hit the seats, please. We're going to be back in order. You're very kind. All right, we are back in order. Thank you all for your patience this evening and thank you to remaining staff and friends for being here. I appreciate your patience as well. Our final public hearing this evening is, I'm just going to call it Design Excellence and let Ms. Means offer a staff report.
Greetings, everybody. Thank you for sticking around and hearing us out. Today is a hearing on considering the Design Excellence Project and it is, it compiles of three motions that we are asking you to consider. I'm Lavelle Means again with the Development Services and Planning Section and I have with me Lee Einzweiler with Code Studio. He's been one of the consultants on this project along with Norrie Winter, Winter and Associates. And Norrie sends his regards but he couldn't make it tonight. We are going to tag-team on the presentation. So first, I'll provide the background on the project and then hand it over to Lee as he gets into the content of reminder of the strategies that set the recommendations moving and going into the standards and guidelines. Then I will come back to talking about a few of the amendments we're making in Title 20 to align all of this work together, some of the additional staff recommended changes we'd like to make, and then close out with the recommended motion. As I mentioned, there are three motions we are asking you to consider tonight. The first is to approve the text amendments to Title 20. The second is to approve applying the new regulations to overlay district boundary areas. And the third is to approve a resolution to adopt the Missoula Excellence Design Manual. Just to get started here, I'd like to tell you a little bit about what the Missoula Design Excellence Project is. It's a shared set of community design objectives and priorities. It's essentially a vision for high-quality development in our commercial corridors and our downtown. What it does for us is it shifts the way that we've been looking at design standards from use-based development towards a more place-based design standards. And it is compiled of a system of zoning amendments and design standards that would be fitting into our code, design guidelines that support and provide some flexibility, and then a series of incentives. Why we're doing this project is, you know, really stems back to some city council-initiated interests. And what it helps us to do is celebrate and respect Missoula's unique character. It reinforces our recent development successes, but it also provides response to some of the community concerns that we've seen related to development projects in the recent past. It helps to reinforce our sense of community and character, and it also implements many of our recommendations from our growth policy. When we talk about what it is, I think it's also important to remember what it is not. So this is not a change when we look at trying to implement language as overlays. This is not a change to your base zoning districts, so it doesn't affect the current allowed uses or densities. This isn't about applying these design standards to detached houses, two-unit homes, or to townhome exemption developments. And it doesn't change or redesign street systems. So the focus here is really within the private development and the area of development outside of the street system. There's a strong policy base for considering this project. Additionally, when considering zoning amendments, there are review criteria that we are required to consider that includes consistency with the growth policy. The detailed assessment of those review criteria included in the staff report, and our conclusion is that the project does meet the review criteria. Support for the project implements several recommendations from the growth policy, and I've just listed some of them here. We do see mention and reference to concerns over respecting the character of our community as development happens, looking at the way the community design standards should be implemented and considered, especially along some of our key corridors that interface with the public realm, all of things that have been of important value while we were developing the growth policy and as we are now trying to implement it. But additionally, I think it's really important to note that this is something that has been of interest and of concern in the current downtown master plan as well. There are several things that they are mentioning through that master plan that we are now at a point of finally implementing, including the notion of having a downtown overlay, having design guidelines, having a unique set of design review process, and the kinds of things that we are addressing in the design standards, like the requirement for build-two zones and activating our edges. The process for this project has been developed in two key phases. We started the conversation about this process and this project and design qualities really back in about the end of 2015. Council approved the work plan in early 2016, and we began working on the first phase with consultants Winter and Company and their subconsultants. The first phase consisted of looking at our background materials and really kind of getting a sense of what do we currently offer, what do we currently have as standards in our community, and what do our policies guide us towards. It also included a couple really key community engagement processes, the workshops that we started off with, and the ability to talk to participants and people interested about what kinds of ideas or concerns they have. That was really helpful in helping us to shape vision for this process and to develop the kinds of key guiding principles that moved us into the next phase. What that concluded with is actually a strategy report. So we summarized a lot of that effort as well as the recommended approaches in a strategy report. And we came to LUP last September and November with that information, seeking your comment and considerations. That strategy report also was representing the kinds of comments that we heard from the community and how to make adjustments to our approach based on that. After review of the strategy report, we moved into the second phase of this project. And that was where we really started getting into the detail of the framework for the ordinance as well as formalizing the development language. While we were in this phase, we conducted an economic analysis of key features. We also engaged the community in more input. We continued to take comment and continued to consider ways to right-size the standards while still keeping the principles in mind. We also received, we did some outreach before leading up to the planning board hearing. And we, up to date, we have had one official protest for this project, and it was for one property owner who has land on South Avenue, four parcels and two adjacent parcels. So that would not meet the requirement for needing a two-thirds majority vote, which is a 25 percent requirement of protest. We did hold a public hearing on this item at Planning Board on October 30th of 2018. They recommended approval with some staff recommended changes. And then we came, we brought this project to LUP at a couple points, one as a briefing on October 31st, and then again on November 7th where we asked you to set the public hearing. Out of that, out of those meetings, there were also some additional staff recommended and LUP recommended changes. So the document that you have before you today, it does have the Planning Board recommendations accepted into the document, and it has the LUP recommended changes shown as track changes for you. Just to kind of give you an overview of what the public outreach efforts have been to date, and I would just say there's also a summary of the more detailed information about public outreach as an item on the SIRE Agenda and on our website. So, once we had a solid draft moving into this second phase, we invited property owners and tenants to attend an open house in March of this year. And we did that by our typical means of communication with email, display ads, et cetera, but we also sent postcards to all the property owners. So that was the first item I'm listing here of over 4,000 people. After that, we collected the information, made further revisions to the draft documents. And then as we were getting closer to the Planning Board hearing, besides all the typical outreach efforts, we also mailed letters to all the property owners and the adjacent property owners. And with that mailing, we provided information about which districts they might be within, whether they're being notified because they are within the zoning areas or adjacent to the zoning areas. We provided a map, and we provided information about how to provide public comment, and the dates of the public hearing, as well as an open house that we held as an additional outreach effort that was about mid-October, maybe early October, and invited people to attend the open house as a way to see the more detailed lay of the district boundary areas. We also provided email notice, as I mentioned, and when we do that, we send an email to the Office of Neighborhoods so that they can alert neighborhood representatives to the upcoming events and activities. The various ways that we met and worked through this process with the community included key workshops and open houses and an early online questionnaire. And then while working through the process and at the key workshops, we held focus groups to meet with various stakeholder interests. And then we kept an active website with information that was posted on that at regular basis. Some of the key groups that we met with through the course of this project include the developer community, property owners and business owners, designers and architects, builders, contractors, the boards and commissions that may be tasked with looking at some of this information, and neighborhoods. So that gives you a snapshot of what a process has been leading into this. I'm going to hand it over to Lee, and he's going to start to work through the content of it a little bit more. Thanks.
Thank you. Lee Einzweiler with Code Studio from Austin, Texas. And I'm going to apologize again that Norrie can't be here. My responsibility was the zoning document. This is the measurable, quantifiable standards that are being added to the development code. There is also the Companion Design Excellence Manual, which you're going to adopt by resolution when you act, we hope. And it is used in specific circumstances, and we'll talk a little bit about that. So those are the two pieces that I want to just brief you on so that you know a little bit about their content. Many of you I actually recognize from the LUP meeting, so thank you for all coming back and sitting up here at the big kids' table to talk about this stuff again. Early on, the strategy report came back to you, and it's an important kind of touch point for where we headed. Because if you remember, the strategy report came up with some key concepts that are embedded in your regulatory strategy here. Separate places one from another and don't treat them all the same. Separate the downtown context. Separate the corridors. Give them both flexibility in regard to design standards and their guidelines, but also then give them review thresholds that might well be different, and then provide incentives in those areas that are likely to need it. So downtown, the two core pieces do not have the incentive program, for example. As part of that, we asked for support for some fundamental overarching design principles. And these would apply not just in my mind to commercial and mixed-use projects as we're looking at, for the most part, but to any portion of development in the city. That really, design needs to be as specific to Missoula as possible to encourage architectural diversity, more than one cookie cutter. Did I hear that today? Connecting to nature, respecting traditions and the historic resources that are here. Engaging the public realm, this is one real key because many of your commercial corridors especially do not do this very well today. Supporting the economic benefits and value-added that comes from doing things in the public interest and having a shared common interest in how commercial property especially develops. Implementing your growth policy, acting on what you've said you will do. Focusing inward, putting intensity and density in your downtown and on your key corridors, and implementing your area plans. So all of these are fabulous design principles, and of course, when they remain principles, we often don't get them in our projects. And that's why the strategy was to use a combination of standards and guidelines. I'm going to tell you that zoning alone never will give you a great building. You can't mandate your way to great. You can mandate your way to pretty dang good, but that's about as far as we get. And after that, you need to have some kind of interaction between a designer or developer and the city. And that's where the design guidelines come in. So, great projects come from great developers operating within a great framework. So we're hoping that's what we've set up here. One of the keys here, and I hate to harp on this, but a design standard is a measurable thing. It can be a percentage. It can be feet. It can be area, square feet. It can be any of those kinds of things. But I have to be able to walk up to the counter and say, "Did you meet the standard?" Yes or no? Black or white? In the guideline world, there's balancing between the ideas. Can I trade off one thing for another? Is it more important on this particular site to understand something about what's going on in the immediate area and therefore respond this way, whereas on another site in another part of town, I will respond in a different... So this is where our flexibility comes in, right? So, not everything is going to need both systems. Not all projects will need both zoning review and design review. Everybody needs zoning review. So the idea was to tailor to the context. So here you're seeing the two maps, the map of downtown where the colors are changing. Those are being given different rules. Where the colors are the same but in disparate places, they're being given the same rules as each other. So purple on the left is the same as purple on the right. In the corridors, the same thing, where each of the corridors is carrying its own type. And those corridor types could be applied in different places in the future. Or perhaps as a certain corridor grows into, has more activity and meets these standards further, perhaps it changes in type. So you'll be able to morph within this system and live within this system, we hope, for a good number of years to come. Also, the intent was to apply more rigorous standards to the more sensitive contexts. And I'm going to say it maybe in a slightly different way. We have the highest level of interest in pedestrian activity in the highest pedestrian activity area, the downtown. And as our interest is reduced, we have to think about allowing more flexibility and not requiring the same level of pedestrianism that we would in the downtown. So we're not taking the standards from the eight-story building in the downtown and applying it to the one-story retail out in the outlying corridor. The downtown strategy also took into account this sort of notion of both being compatible with your traditional character, but also having the highest level of street interest. Some streets are just not as important as other streets within the downtown. Some are your stronger retail streets. Other streets will not be. And it's important to just recognize that and be able to have the buildings respond to that. In addition, the final piece of flexibility is the actual applicability. This chart's a little out of date, so I'm just going to leave it in teeny-tiny print, but we'll show it to you in the ordinance in a readable version because some of it's morphed a little bit. But the point being, at a certain size of project, at a certain level of interest for the project, we wanted a higher degree of review. So we're going to talk about that. So first off, the Design Excellence Overlay. As you heard, this is an overlay. It goes over a bunch of underlying districts. Luckily, it no longer has to go under the, over the EC district. Yeah, SD2 and a few other things. But it goes over anything that you choose to place it over, right? It is intended to come in, it has a general set of rules, which you see in the table of contents here, and then it has the two very specific detailed sort of zoning overlays. And we're going to walk you quickly through that document. So the first thing is, the applicability is parcel-specific. This is not just an idea that says, "If you're within 500 feet of this, we might apply it to you if you're one of these and you're purple and it's Sunday and you have polka dots." It actually says, "This property has this overlay." So everybody got that level of detail when they were talking about their property at an open house or something else. They knew what the rules were going to be. So there's geographic applicability. And if you look, basically, it's the parcels that touch the corridors or have high visual impact on the corridor. So it's not intended to go layers deep back into the neighborhoods. It's the commercial zoning. So there are some entire chunks of corridors that while they're still the X, Y, or Z corridor, they're residential in nature, and this is not applied to them, right? If you go and zone them commercially, I would encourage you to also place the overlay in place, of course. But for now, these are the affected parcels, and they have their exact zoning. So there's no question about applicability. We do not have a problem at the counter of saying, "Ooh, you know, what am I? Am I in? Am I not in?" Right? The zoning map is going to tell you exactly, yes, you have this applied to you. Second, there's the project level of applicability. And that means, "I am doing this kind of project." So of course, ordinary maintenance and repair, not subject to this. If you want to seal coat your parking lot, if you are going to change out your windows in-kind with the exact same kind of windows, just want to upgrade the energy-saving quality of them, feel free. There's lots of things you can do that would just be considered in-kind replacement. On the other hand, at a certain point, you're going to trigger the thresholds and you'll be subject to this review. And so here are the thresholds for Design Excellence Review. Everybody gets zoning compliance review. That stays at the staff level, and it uses only this book. This book, for those people, is like the lookbook, you know? That here's our good ideas. Go use some of them. But it's not mandatory if you're doing just zoning compliance. So, when you look there and it says you're doing Design Excellence Review, you're in the Design Excellence Manual and its guidelines. And so you'll see that all of the downtown has Design Excellence Review. Typology 1 in the corridors has Design Excellence Review, and Typology 2, 3, and 4 have it, but only if you pass a certain size building. In 2, it's 8,000. In 3, it's 15,000. In 4, it's 15,000 in the center and 30,000 on the outlying areas. Then if you are one of the nodes on the corridor, those were the little circles you saw periodically, those little knuckles where two key roadways come together, then we're going to use Design Excellence there as well because those are sort of gateway and entrance kinds of places where we actually want heightened scrutiny. If you're a conditional use, which not everything is anymore, right? You kind of had old rules that had enterprise-commercial zoning kind of said, "Oh, enterprise-commercial, uh..." You know, you kick the trigger. You're over here in conditional use. It's not true anymore. These are the thresholds now, and you'll only get reviewed through Design Excellence with these thresholds. Now, everybody has to follow the zoning. So again, it's important to know what's in the zoning. So here are those two processes. If you're in zoning compliance review, pre-app meeting is optional. But of course, early on in the establishment of a new system like this, we'd encourage everybody to have a pre-application meeting. Because nobody's really going to know how to use these books yet. Their architects won't. Their landscape architect won't. Everybody has to kind of get into the system. So at the start, your staff is going to spend a fair amount of time in pre-application meetings. You submit your application. It better be complete because there is nothing less developer-friendly than allowing in incomplete applications. Having staff baby bad applicants through the process is not useful. So applications have to be complete. This does not mean that staff can't help people get their applications complete. It's just that you don't formally accept them until they're complete. Start the clock when it's complete, and then move through the zoning review. In this instance, when you're only using this book and the rest of Title 20, the review and decision is by the zoning officer, unless there's a use or something else that made it a conditional use permit. But otherwise, if they're all by right uses, you'll just be in a decision by the zoning officer, and the Design Excellence Manual's informational. If you're in Design Excellence Review, again, pre-application meeting, optional, but much more likely to be important here because you are going to go through design review. Submit your application. Again, it should be complete. Gets reviewed by the zoning officer using the overlay standards, including the use at the staff level of this book, and then can be referred or offered up for a decision to the design review board. So those referrals, we consider them a bump-up. If staff looks at something and says, "Ooh, this is pretty intense, and it's right next to this neighborhood, and they've always been really sensitive about this stuff," or "This is a really key parcel, and we've got to get it right," it's likely to get bumped up to the design review board. That doesn't mean the staff's not reviewing it. It's just that they become a recommending body at that point instead of a decision-making body. So, we have these two tracks, and by turning these on and off with those thresholds, we get a different impact. Downtown, intense review. Nodes, intense review. Typology 1 corridors, intense review. Less intense for small buildings in other places. That's what it kind of comes down to. So, one other big new idea. There is nothing worse than standing in a variance process and trying to describe a hardship about your property that really doesn't have a hardship. It has a design problem. And you're really trying to have a design conversation about how much better your building is if you could only this. But you're in front of a set of people who are in a quasi-judicial format, have findings of fact to make, and it's just not a good end process for improving the quality of development. In fact, what it is, is a ditching of some of your rules. You're saying, "Yes, you can clip off one-third of your parking," or "Yes, you can move your side yard setback," or whatever else. You're not getting a trade-off. We've designed a process that we usually call alternative compliance, in which we can have a design discussion and meet a standard in an alternative way. It requires Design Excellence Review so that we can do that softer, have that softer conversation. But for example, these are the images from the design guidelines about how you might meet the transparency requirement. Let's say I'm a huge grocery store and I got a bunch of coolers, and I can't have all that glass on the front of my building. "Yeah, I'll give you a bunch here by the door, but I need my coolers, you know, right out here because the path through my store works like this, and that's the way it always goes, and I need that." Well, here's some options. You know, give us some outdoor seating there. Give us some public art there. Give us some excess landscaping there. Give us a green wall. Give us some excellent architectural detail. Give us some public art. Give us whatever. We'll evaluate it and decide whether it's a it's equivalent or better than the activation that would have been there if there'd been windows, and if it is, we can allow you to move forward with that. That's part of the flexibility that is going to gain you design excellence. Because instead of doing something stupid, like just letting them off the hook, or just living with a bad building, a bad blank wall, we're actually getting something back that brings back the quality of the building. Okay. There is also a lot of information in here about the interpretation of the standards and much of it is illustrated. So we believe the zoning portion of the review will be much swifter under the new code because of its visual nature. There are a set of incentives embedded in here. These incentives are modified standards. They're available in selected areas in the overlay, so for example, the downtown core doesn't have the parking exemption because they already have one, so we don't have to give it to them. But you'll be able to substitute on-street parking for some of your parking spaces if you have legitimate on-street parking in front of your building. We're changing the rules for parking for adaptive reuse. We're allowing for parking reductions, a series of reductions, like transit served locations or bike served locations, access bike parking beyond the standard. We're allowing for a change in the landscaping and a change in the activity area based on the way that buildings are sited. We don't need the same kind of landscaping and activity area that you've had to use in the past in order to get decent quality sites. So this is an example of what the page layout looks like, and I just wanted to show you, look at the column that says vertical scale, the second one with the bulk of the building. So the point is, we have color that matches the color on our maps, and here's an example of downtown north. And you can immediately see the difference between these kinds of buildings and these kinds of places in those images on the left. One is a much more massive building taking up much more of the site, the second one, less massive building taking up far less of the site. The fact of the matter is, when we write these kinds of regulations in text only, they're great for the city attorney, thank you Jim, but other than that, they don't help the designers very much, right? The designers actually have to translate all those words into these visuals. So the visuals help an awful lot, both at the review level, at the code enforcement level, and at the applicant level. So the overlay standards include things like rules for the building, rules for the parking, the height, there are step backs, and there are floor-to-ceiling heights. I know you've all heard about the floor-to-ceiling heights. There's also the piece on facade design, and that has the glazed area for ground stories and upper floors, and it has entrance spacing, and then finally, there's material coverage because materials happen to be one of those things that really make a difference in a community like this where there is a sensibility about the connection with nature and the surrounding area. So that's the basics of the zoning. Want to talk to you just a little bit about the design manual as well. The intent of the design manual is that it's providing flexibility. It is qualitative, it is discretionary. It's not in that quantitative yes/no world. This is the shades of gray world, right? Site design, building design, sign design are all included in here. And one of the keys here is that every single one of the design guidelines lies under an intent statement and leads all the way back up to the guiding principles. So when you're asking yourself about balancing these things one against the other, you have a lot of framing of how to think about these things. And you don't have to do it on the fly and you're not doing it on a case-by-case basis. You have a book that helps you frame how to think about it. And one of the things that it does is it covers things like site design, it covers site design, building design, the corridors, well, same thing, site design and building design, and then sign design. So, site and building design, downtown site and building design on corridors and signs are kind of the key pieces of it. Again, the downtown context and their level of review change, and they change on the basis of the guidelines that are appropriate to them. What you'll see in each of the design guidelines is sort of a description of the guideline, you'll see some visuals, you may see something like this little box in the corner that refers you back to the code and shows you that this is an idea implementing an element of the zoning code itself, the zoning overlay, and then provides you ideas about how to design your project effectively. Here's the one we were just looking at for providing street-level interest, and so here's some of those alternative methods in text and in vision, visual. Here's the one on materials, the discussion of what natural materials is and what other materials might be acceptable. And when looking at compatibility, how to think about compatibility, including with historic and traditional fabric in the community. So each of those pieces is here in the downtown, they're also here in the corridor, there's a great example right here of adaptive reuse. This is actually an existing building in the corridor that did a little site plan for and thought about how it could be adaptive, really adaptively reused to come closer into compliance with the intent of the future overlay. So if you were to tear this building down, it would have been pulled up to the street and the parking would have been behind. But to adaptively reuse it, we just want to achieve some of those intents. So you'll see that edge of the landscaping and other things coming out to the street as though it were the building edge, right? So some ways to think about how you adaptively reuse existing buildings. Because that's going to be the number one thing you're going to do on the corridors, right? You are going to build some new buildings, of course, but in the meantime, the effective and inexpensive opportunities are all in adaptive reuse. So in addition to that, we just wanted to mention, I know that the cost question has been part of the challenge here. And there is a memo that's been made available that's a summary of a series of case studies. We tested the variables like the step back, developers are very worried that the step back was reducing the volume of their building and therefore they were losing floor area and this would have a financial impact. We looked at the materials, we looked at our options for reduced parking and reduced landscaping. And so pro formas were prepared for four theoretical projects which had multiple iterations. So three different downtown contexts. The current code was examined, a step back with no additional square footage added, and then a step back plus adding square footage. And then one corridor context, because many of the examples in the corridor are similar to two of those downtown ones. And again, the current code and then example with the reduced parking but no additional floor area, and an example adding additional floor area in that space from the reduced parking. And in looking at those, it was fascinating. Not a single one is outside of the range of acceptable return on asset. So this is a different kind of a review than you've seen. This has very little to do with the cost of the building. This is not, it is of course impacted by the cost of the building. But what we're really looking at here is, am I getting enough rent to give myself a return? Am I leasing this in the commercial, in the office, in the residential world for enough to receive a reasonable return? And actually, after looking at what the stock market did today, these returns actually look kind of rosy. The range of return on asset for office was 8% to 9%, for commercial the same, 8% to 9%, and for multifamily, down to 6.5% to 7%. That was the range in general that is considered acceptable. So for example, we did a high-rise office and it never went below 8%, which is the bottom of that bracket in any of our variations. We did an example of a multifamily project and it stayed within the range for multifamily. We did, in the downtown gateway, we did a vertical mixed-use project in which both the commercial portion and the residential portion performed adequately. And then finally, out in corridor typology 2, we did a small, one-story retail project which actually performed exceptionally well, especially with the reduced parking if you added the additional area. So we believe that we proved that the system functions. It may be adding cost. This is not to suggest that there is absolutely no cost associated with this. But we have been, we think, quite sensitive to the cost issue here in comparison with many of our client communities. And we have embedded in the system lots of ways to be flexible and get to an answer that works for the developer. And with that, I believe I'm going to give it back to you.
So, Lavelle Means again, and just finally, to kind of wrap up a few of the other amendments that you'll be looking at. There are a couple sections of our current Title 20 that we are amending to create the alignment with this new design excellence review program. One is in the chapter 85 related to the design review process, and the other are some amendments that we are proposing to make to the administrative chapter that has to do with the design review board structure and their membership. I'd also like to draw your attention to some additional recommended changes. First off, we sent out a memo that is dated December 7th and should be in your history for this project. And that is one where we wrestled with whether to change the ground floor, the requirement for the distance between the ground floor and the ceiling for commercial uses. And we had gotten some comment about it and we felt there were some good points that were being made, and we talked about it a little bit more and realized that it is more appropriate. We should be thinking about the whole sense of place space and context, and we were recommending the same number, I think it was 13 feet as a ground floor-to-ceiling height over all of the contexts. The points that were made that resonated really had to do with, that they should be more right-sized for the neighborhood context that we were dealing with, and that we could have some architectural ramifications for non-retail-related uses. So we wanted to look at that a little closer, work with our consultants on it, and ultimately we provided a memo that provided some detail about what we think we should change. Our recommendation is that we should modify that floor-to-ceiling height for the typologies 2, 3, and 4 from 13 feet to 10 feet. That comes with also making a few amendments to the intent statements, some of the general interpretation portions related to the floor-to-ceiling height as well, and you saw that in the memo I think this also allows us to still set a tone about being able to, that 10 feet is the same number that you use for residential, and it really allows you to sort of swing spaces between residential and commercial pretty well as well. So we felt that was a good adjustment and we're putting that before you to consider as well. There are three new items though, that I haven't summarized in a memo, that are housekeeping items that I just also want to bring to your attention and ask you to consider as additional amendments. The first one is to strike the reference that we have within the code that has to do with the EC overlay. Since that is something that we took care of last week, there was a little bit of a placeholder in it with an editor's note that it wouldn't be needed if we did strike that reference. So we're doing some cleanup here and we'd like to remove that, it's on page 31. Another thing that we noticed has to do with a section referring to design variations, and that's on page 39 in the draft ordinance. And right now, it says that the design variations would be considered for the two key measurement sections that Lee has been talking about, chapter 80, section 81 and 82. But there are also design standards that are in the general section of the chapter 80 as well. So we wanted the relief for applicants to consider variation for all of those components that have to do with standards in the design excellence, including that general standard section, and I reference it here, it's 080.C that we would be adding to that section. The third one has to do with a correction to the vehicular access section. We wrote a statement in there about referring to the commercial driveway standards that are in some technical drawings and in some additional consultation between the consultant and the engineering department. We would just recommend striking that section completely, they're really going through a process right now of rewriting the engineering design standards. We would have referred and tried to reflect whatever that was anyway. So we just feel, you can strike that section, do away with it, and we wouldn't miss anything. It would be a cleanup and it would be something we'd have to do later on anyway when they made changes to that engineering standards. So those are the three cleanup items, plus the memo that you received, the consideration of that. So that brings us to our motions. There's the three key, there's the three motions as I mentioned. The first one is to put the language into the code, and it does include and as amended with staff recommended changes if you're inclined. The second one is to apply it to the district boundary areas that we have included as an ordinance with all the listings of the properties, so it's exhibit A and referenced in exhibit B. And then the third one is to consider the resolution that would put forward the design excellence manual for our use. And that concludes our presentation, we're available for questions.
Thank you both. With that, I will open the public hearing. Mr. Gray, you've been patient.
My name is David Gray, an architect in Missoula, so I'm one of the few people that's strange out there and I actually read all of this stuff. Could you guys raise your hand, who read the 171 pages of the design manual? All right, I love it. A handful of you, that's good. So I sent you guys a letter, I sent you cost estimate for two projects. I used RS Means, that's the national standard cost estimating software, nothing's made up with it, that's where a project starts. So, I hope you looked it over. It showed the cost, the one was a 10,000 square foot multiplex. Today, if we built it, it was $152, I think, a square foot today's standard. And here was the cost for adding a lot of brick, a lot of glazing, that's all mandatory through this on the multifamily, right? That, in essence, I said, okay, 20% circulation, right? That's normal in a building, wipe that off. Breaks out to 10 units, 850 square feet each, right? Pretty simple. Added, what, $33,000 per unit in cost? Okay, that project's dead. Those housing units are not going to be built anymore. Developers I work with, I work with quite a few housing developers, they try to recoup 5% out of the job. That's what they were trying to take home, 5%. Right? So it's not, developers are reaping huge amounts of money, you know? They're trying to figure out like, I got to put in a million-dollar water tank and water system, I have all this site work to do, I'm dropping tens of thousands of dollars into the project just to see if I could buy the land, right? So then, I'll get into review after that. On the commercial side, you got the Mercantile Building downtown. It's a very good example of what this is now going to require for new commercial, right? I'm not a big fan of the building personally, but they're doing a nice job of it. It's got a lot of glass on the main floor, lots and lots of glass on the main floor. That's really nice on the street, right? We build with wood in Montana because we harvest the wood here, and we can build on a square foot basis very economically with wood. That building has a concrete superstructure like a high-rise building because something has to hold the rest of the building up, it has to hold all that brick up on the floors above it, right? This has 70% minimum masonry. Something's got to keep that from falling over in an earthquake or when the wind blows, and all the walls on the main floor are glass. I can't build that out of wood. So you do what they did. They spend many, many millions of dollars on the frame of the first floor, and then most of the first floor is not finished, that's up for the tenants to do, right? And now that's got the highest rents in town to pay for that building. And then those people still have to do their tenant improvements on top of that. So it has a direct cost. The ceiling heights, I'm glad that you guys are doing some ceiling heights. When the fan was actually running, I was kind of getting some comparisons so you can find out what 13-foot-high ceilings are. The bottom of that ductwork is about 13-foot-high ceiling. According to these According to these rules, that's to the lowest finish of a ceiling. If I have a soffit, I measure to the bottom of the soffit. Look out, you're mechanical and everything's up there, your hallway out here has a nine-foot-high ceiling, not a 13-foot-high ceiling, there's probably five, six feet of structure, I assume this continues all the way through, and it's filled with mechanical units and all of that stuff. So that stuff still has to be above that 13-foot-high ceiling. So to give you an idea, the second floor of these buildings is the same thing as the third floor of your house, and you have to provide all the structure, all the mechanical for that entire volume, the mechanical serves the volume of air. So you've got a very big mechanical system now, because it's got two full stories just getting to the structural deck of the second floor. So, you know, there's a lot of cost in putting that in, there's a lot of cost in running that thing, because the bigger they get, the more complicated they get, because the building codes are trying to reduce the amount of windows, because really good windows are like R3, right? Normal windows are R2. A normal wall has R21 insulation in it, another five inches of continuous insulation over that, then all your finishes, so, you know, windows stink as far as energy goes, right? And they let in a lot of sunlight, so then we have a lot of heat, or cooling costs in the summer, we got a lot of heat costs in the winter, and no matter how good the windows are, it sucks the heat off your body, as Julie will attest over here. When we were sitting downtown, I was trying to explain this to her, and it's cold, it wasn't the space was cold, we were by the windows, and it was through long-wave radiation, sucking the heat off of our body to the outside, right? So that all has a comfort effect, right? This is, I'm going to highlight some of the stuff, because you've been through a lot of this. Why are we proposing an ordinance that would not allow the Wilma Theater, the Florence Building, or Stockman's Bank? Those are pretty much considered, I think, what everyone thinks would think are great buildings, right, in the downtown. The Wilma's too big, it's too tall, two or three stories, too tall, you would have to cut it off at the sixth story, and then you got to put in a bunch of manufactured, what do they call it, articulation? I just make up some terms and throw some stuff in here, some of the stuff looks like 1970s Chicago warehouse, from what I could tell. It's not based off of like, what's in Missoula, I mean, what makes Missoula great? The Wilma has a sum total, maybe eight inches variation in brick on its facade, looks great, has nice shadow lines, great cornices, it's got some glass, it doesn't have nearly like 30% glass on the upper stories, it's got a big, deep entryway. I talked to Ben about this yesterday, that entryway throws that building on the first floor out of compliance, because the door is too far from the property line. Florence Building, it's, again, it's too tall. Stockman's Bank doesn't have enough glass, and there is too much space between the windows on those nice brick walls that they got, so it's not conforming. Is that really what we want with a code? When I went through this, as far as the existing building goes, because I think a lot of what we do is going to be with existing buildings, and talking with Ben on this as well, it says buildings don't have to comply 100%, but the intent is that they will get to 100% compliance. I would like to add a window to my building, because I'd like to get a better view. Didn't replace it, I added it. That window has to be in conformance, to the greatest extent possible. I'd like to reside this really ugly building and make it look nice, but it says I got to have 50% brick. So brick has to go on it, building's not designed to have brick on it, doesn't have the lateral loads, doesn't have the foundation capabilities, this doesn't say I get to not put the brick on, it says the minimum amount of brick will be 50% or 70% or 60%, the minimum amount of windows. So everything we do, no matter the review process, with working with a planner, working with a design review board, whatever, it's to get into as close to full compliance as you can get, and there is no cost restrictions for how far is that? There's no cost restrictions, it's basically kind of an all-or-nothing, it's not as flexible as it's, they're saying it is, because it has minimums that you must comply with. So it's not that simple. If the apartment units cost $32,000 more apartment unit, if that building I showed you, that commercial office building, it's 20,000-square-foot building, none of the finishes changed, on the interior, just the outside changed, it had more windows, and it had brick, and it had the stone, that this is requiring on every commercial building, that means their loan is bigger, the rents are higher, if they're a renter, the rents are higher, the loan is bigger to do it, and all of that is being passed on to the business owner or the renter that's going to be in there, right? So is that really what we want for Missoula, is mandatory higher rents? I don't even know where he's coming with those rate of returns, you know? If I add that kind of cost to the building, the job is done, you know, it's just not built, all right? So Missoula needs solutions, you know, that allow increased density where it's appropriate. This ordinance takes away developable land, because it has new setbacks, right? The building is not allowed to be 12 stories tall, you got to set back after six floors, you got to go back 20 feet minimum. So now, those could have all been dwelling units, all the way up to the other six floors, but now, those can't be there. There's more landscaping in the parking, right? Parking drives everything, I don't care what the density says, if I can't park it, I can't have it. You're adding more parking lot landscaping, I'm not opposed to parking lot landscaping, but what that says in reality is I lost the entire row of parking on the one side, and every one of those was an office, or every one of those was an apartment unit, so I just dropped the density the parking is allowing me to have on the site. So now the building's more expensive, I have less density in use in it, and so the rents are just that much higher. We're at about eight minutes, David. Sorry. Just keep Missoula weird. The strange architecture we have all over town, that shows the authenticity of Missoula's people. We got to keep that. Bozeman has lost it. When I was in school in Bozeman, it was a cool downtown, it was like our downtown. It looks like any place, it could be a mall in California, it looks really expensive, I get that, it looks really expensive, it has lost its character and identity, because those design standards weren't based off of what made the town so interesting. This one does the same thing. Thank you.